Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Francisco.
Here.
Hodgkins.
Here.
House. Mario.
Here.
Rouse. White. Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Any public comment for items not on the agenda today?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move, I believe we're doing the city attorney's office first. Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This is the city attorney's budget presentation for fiscal year 2014. Prelimarily, let me say the obvious, that we don't, unlike Public Works, we don't build bridges, we don't fix streets, we don't run traffic signals, even compared to Parks and Rec, we don't run softball programs, or dance classes, or maintain our parks. We're, obviously, as attorneys, we're somewhat like the departments, if you will, in City Hall. We advise the city council, we advise the city department heads, and the city administrator. And so our work product is words. Sometimes that's verbal advice, hopefully more often than not, written legal advice. Sometimes that's in the drafting of ordinances and contracts. And other than providing advice, and providing words to the city council and to the city, the other major function we have is we go to court for the city. We, obviously, as attorneys, that's our role, to primarily defend the city in court. Fortunately, the city is, we're pretty good at that, the city is easy to defend. And at times, we also are in court as prosecutors, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that later on in the presentation, very little. But this next slide, I always like to include this, because you have seen, you will see, occasionally, that our office budget is about 2% of the general fund. At $2 million, we're about, in rough terms, 2% of the general fund. But actually, we're, of course, we don't only advise the general fund, and the enterprise funds, and special revenue funds, even at times, the internal service funds generate a need for legal advice, they need lawyers to advise them. So I think it's just a good indication of the value that the city gets from our office, that we're, let's say, less than 1% of the overall city budget. You know, if you look at the city as a quarter of a billion-dollar organization, which it truly is, quarter of a billion-dollar legal entity, we are the lawyers for that entity, and we are able to do that for well under 1% of the total budget. And, you know, I say that, obviously, as a full-service city that runs an airport, and a harbor, and a police department, and a fire department, and we give all of them advice. And we're readily available for them. And without a whole lot of retaining of special outside legal counsel. And I'm hoping to keep this pretty short, but I do want to say that, in my experience in municipal law, this is a trend that's changing, and it's a trend that's of concern to a lot of cities and city councils, the cost of outside legal counsel. And it's enormous for cities like Los Angeles, or San Francisco, or counties like Los Angeles. And we're very cognizant of the fact, and proud of the fact, that we don't use, we don't need to use special counsel very often in the city. At times, we have to, because of their special expertise. But we try to keep that to a minimum, and to when it's absolutely necessary. So in terms of our role, and this is our mission statement, I feel very serious about all of these things, particularly just giving frank and understandable legal advice to city staff, to the city council. You know, I think lawyers are often accused of, on the one hand, this, on the other hand, that. And I don't think that's helpful. At the same time, though, as the city attorney, and I know the attorneys in our office, we're proud of the fact that we're attorneys, and in a way, we rely on that. It's nice, as an attorney, at times, to say, I don't have to make the hard decisions, I'm not getting paid to make the hard decisions. The city council makes those decisions, or Jim Armstrong makes those decisions, and the department heads, we just give the advice. But I do like to have good, frank, understandable, common sense advice, and then let the decision-makers make their decisions. And I feel strongly about this, our role as wordsmiths for the city, for, you know, when there's a comprehensive or a complicated ordinance, you should demand that that ordinance be very well-written, be very understandable. And if years later, it proves not to be, you should say to the city attorney, what happened here? And I really try to impress that on the attorneys in my office, because the charter says this, that we draft ordinances, and we need to take it very seriously. And it's not simple to do. There are a lot of considerations that go into drafting a good ordinance, and I just want, you know, to mention that, and to tell you how seriously the people, the attorneys in our office, take that. Just moving to the next slide. One of the things we do in our office, and I don't know that every city has the same approach, is that we're very active in code enforcement. We have a deputy city attorney. You know, when I started with the office, there were only three attorneys, that was 1983, and very shortly thereafter, the city council went to the city attorney and said, we want to crank up code enforcement. So we hired, we added a fourth attorney position to do code enforcement, a deputy attorney position. We still have a deputy attorney position doing code enforcement in the city. And we actually now have the luxury, when we get into the details of what used to be called a law clerk, it's not fair to call that individual law clerk anymore, because for the last seven or eight years, they've been lawyers admitted to practice in California, so we're now calling them a contract attorney. Unfortunately, we still have to pay them as if they were a law clerk, I think, in fairness to them. They're happy to have the work, and we're happy to have them, but it's unfortunate that we can only pay them on a law clerk. Between the law clerk and the deputy city attorney, just the next couple of slides, real quickly. This is 1229 and 1231 Yan and Ollie Street. These are abandoned homes, and I saw this, this referral came in from the code enforcement. You can see the junk in the yard, and then, of course, this home has holes right through the roof, and right through the garage, and I just, again, you know, I saw this referral a few weeks ago come in, and they all come to me, and I said, you know, this is a top priority, no neighbor, no neighborhood should have to put up with this sort of thing. It makes absolutely no sense. Occasionally, a lot we find that the property owner has medical reasons why they're not taking care of their property, that's not true in this case, as far as I know. And, but no neighbor, and no neighborhood should have to put up with this sort of thing. So this is, this is something that our deputy city attorney has been told is a top priority to get to. So just, yeah. Again, I sort of talked about this, you know, but again, it's a full-service city, and six full-time attorneys, one half-time, former law clerk, now hourly contract attorney. This is, you know, the departments that we advise, and it keeps us pretty busy. Yet, you know, and I don't need to go, you know better than anyone what's happened in the last few years, so in terms of salary and benefits, from 2009 to 2014, projected 2014, we're actually down, and down 13.1%. Expenditure, so.
Steve.
Yes.
What did that reduction consist in?
Primarily, it was a, we laid off one attorney, I think, 2010. And other than that, it was cutting back on hours for some of our clerical staff. Several positions have been cut back in terms of the hours. And we now have as many attorneys as we had in 2009, but they're, it's a deputy instead of an assistant position, and the law clerk is at halftime now.
Okay, thank you.
The, our supplies and services are down as well. That is primarily, and I mentioned this last year at this time, that we were able to renegotiate our lease in a very, at a market very favorable to tenants, with a landlord who, I think, wanted to keep us. And so our rents are down, and consequently, our supplies and services are down. In terms of why the salary and benefit numbers are going up, of course, that reflects our, the additional PERS costs, reflects the annual adjustment that's being proposed for salaries, and then, is it, are we calling it PERB, or there's some? OPED, yeah. The distribution of the unallocated liability, I guess, I can't think of the right term right now, the fact that we've all, every department has out there accrued sick time, accrued vacation hours, that was an unfunded liability, and now we're going to start funding that liability, something, of course, makes a lot of sense. Oh, you know, at least, I should mention as well, back on that last slide, there are a couple of small increases that I am suggesting in this budget. For example, one of the things we had to cut that was training, an education budget for the attorneys, and I think that we cut that down to the bare minimum in 2009. I'm suggesting that this next year, we add $5,000 to our budget, and that would be for the six attorneys to attend primarily league seminars. You know, as attorneys, we're all required to have continuing education, 22 hours every two years of continuing educations in certain specific areas in particular. And while you can get some of that online, you still have to pay for it, you can get it online, and you can get some of it locally at meetings, you generally have to pay for that as well. I just think it's, the league is such a tremendous resource, the league city attorney's section is such a tremendous resource, it would, now, if the city can afford it, would be good to send some of our attorneys to these league meetings, league seminars, as well as there's others. Libra Cassidy has a great, has great seminars on personnel law, and of course, there's planning conferences and SECA conferences as well. We are not just a department that, well, let me, let me say first, of course, as I mentioned, we provide advice to a lot more than just general fund employees, general fund departments. So it makes sense that there's an overhead allocation, just as you would do the sort of, that sort of thing for payroll, or for HR services, there's an overhead allocation distributed to the non-general funds for our services. And, you know, this has been studied in detail by consultants over the years in terms of what the correct allocation is, and this is, of course, the most currently, the current correct allocation. Of course, we, we aren't just a department that costs money, we do bring in some revenues. In years past, for years, of course, that was, it was appropriate to distribute some of the redevelopment agency tax increment to the city attorney's office to represent the fact that we advise the city redevelopment agency. We do bring in miscellaneous revenues, in fact, we had a good year in the past year. This is primarily civil penalties on code enforcement, where, under the municipal code, we have the right to demand civil penalties for civil code enforcement. Actually, it can be as high as $1,000 a day. So in this past year, we've brought in almost $71,000 in, as they say, civil penalties for the city. So that's, that's my last slide, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley, for your presentation. What is the dollar figure of the training that you're talking about? Did I miss that?
The increase, I think it's, the increase that I asked for was $5,000. The, I think the budget's been down to about $1,500 in recent years.
Thank you.
And that is included in the proposed budget.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Services were cut back by the loss of the attorney, the loss of the attorney was four years ago, something like that?
Yeah, about that, no, yeah, three.
What, how did, how did you change the operation to deal with that?
You know, to be honest, there was, there was a period of time, about nine months, where we were down one attorney, and we just had to distribute that among the attorneys. So, for example, we took the water division, and we transferred that responsibility to one attorney in the office, to Sarah Connect, and we took ultimately, just general Public Works advice, and we asked Teva Oslinger in our office to cover that, and then I picked up some of the slack, we all picked up some of the slack. And I will tell you, though, it wasn't easy. And, you know, this reminds me, it, there was a lot of extra work during that period of time. We also, Michelle Montez was an attorney in our office for, oh, let's say, close to 10 years, and she recently wanted to not work for a while, and we had that vacancy, we left that vacancy for a while, again, to just kind of get through the tough budget times, and we distributed the workload. As attorneys get more experienced and more familiar with the city, for example, Teva has been with the office now six years, and so she can handle a lot more than she could have that first year, things like that.
So there's, there's not a sense of some services that were cut out to get there, or that it's, what's the sustainability of this, of running this system with one less attorney?
No, I would say nothing got cut out, there was, it took us more time to get to things when we were shorthanded.
On that thought, moving forward, I know at the last joint meeting with the Planning Commission, just the amount of work that the Community Development Department's going to need from your office on implementing ordinances for the general plan implementation stage, that seems more than usual, and I'm wondering if, maybe not this year, but in the next, in the second year of the plan, do we need to think about increasing hours in your department?
You know, that's a very good question, and I guess I haven't dealt with it directly, because it didn't need to do that immediately. Scott Vincent's been with the office, I think, almost 15 years now, and he, of course, advises community development, he works with the planners on ordinances, and then I work a lot with the planners as well. So between the two of us, that's a lot of experience, and we can handle a lot of ordinances, and that's what we've been doing, for example, with the average unit density ordinance, and I've been handling historic resources aspects, and Scott and I both worked on the Measure E 2, if you will, that we did about a month ago. But there are things coming down the pike that that's going to be difficult to do, and it will hold the city back time-wise. And I think we recognized that when we talked about totally redoing the '57 Chevy, and I think both Community Development, and Jim Armstrong, and the city attorney's office realize, we're probably going to need a little outside help on that one.
Yeah, that would be good to monitor in the next six months or something, and maybe look to see in FY '15, especially with the updated local coastal plan and the zoning ordinance. I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of detailed work that's going to be needed soon, and the last thing we want is to delay the implementation process of the plan, so.
Right.
Yeah. Mr. House?
I appreciate that explanation, as you look forward. So how does it work exactly for your recovery of costs for, say, efforts that are generated within a different department? So does Community Development get billed by, by your department for that additional work? Or is it just part of what's built into the salaries and the expectation that within, I mean, for the additional workload, or if you needed to hire somebody from outside for some period of time? Who pays for that, basically?
Well, in the case of Community Development, it's a general fund department, it's just built in. It's.
I mean, does it show up in their budget, or their request for funds or allocation, or does it show up as part of your budget?
Well, that's really a policy call, it could be in either one, in the future, if we needed some outside help. But generally, if, in terms of the city attorney's office advising Community Development, that, you know, that's just what we do.
I see. Okay, and then in terms of looking ahead, and this sort of goes outside the budget, but maybe not quite, because you're talking about training, I'm going to ask about succession planning, and especially given the nature of, you've got some really qualified staff that have been around for a while, and were we to lose one or another of the higher, you know, achievers there, it could be a world of hurt. So your position, Sarah's, whatever, I mean, how do you look forward to that, and how do you plan for that?
Well, I have, actually, the council has asked about this in recent years, and it's certainly a very good question, and a very good, it just, whether you look at the nature of the baby boomers, and their age they're reaching, or whatever, you, as an organization, public and private have to think about succession planning. So personally, as a lawyer, I believe, I'm a strong believer in lawyers for the city being very familiar with litigation, for example, because, you know, we do our own tort defense in-house, and it's actually a rare municipal lawyer that knows much about tort defense litigation. And so I always encourage the attorneys in our office to handle litigation. We get enough of it, actually, not always tort defense, but we'll get a SECA lawsuit, or Prop 218 lawsuit, or some, you know, challenge to the federal telephone tax. And I've always distributed those among the attorneys in the office as a form of succession planning, and you need to be able to go to court, and to understand civil procedure and litigation process as an attorney. But, and also personally, when there's a major project that comes along, I do think in those terms, of asking the attorneys in our office, who, you know, wants to handle a major project, who has the ability to handle it, the background knowledge, so I definitely have been thinking in those terms.
Okay, taking advantage of cross-training opportunities.
Exactly.
Well, thank you very much.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I thought of some more questions, so thank you for letting me ask again. So, Mr. Wiley, in terms of the gang injunction, so if Judge Stern orders it to go forward, your office would have to produce the order, right, the document itself, so, and have you budgeted for that, in case that happens?
No, again, that would be just the general sort of legal advice that we provide, you know, it wouldn't impact, I could not see something like that, for example, impacting our budget, or saying, well, we need to hire some specialists. In fact, we're not recreating the wheel when it comes to the gang injunction, as I'm going to mention tomorrow night, we've got examples from the city of Oakland of signed actual gang injunctions, current ones, from Oakland, San Francisco, San Diego. And I'll tell you, it's no secret, and this is actually a good legal practice, lawyers build on the work of other lawyers and other judges, and so if we were to be asked by the judge to draft a gang injunction, we would start with examples that we have, and build on those, and adapt them to Santa Barbara and to our purposes. So that actually probably wouldn't take more than a couple lawyers working an afternoon to do that.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you are interested in adapting it to Santa Barbara, because I think we are different from the city of Oakland.
Oh, sure.
So if the order goes through, and an enjoined defendant violates the injunction, would your office, what would your office do then? That would require some work, right, on your part?
Well, not necessarily, you know, of course, the gang injunction effort is a team effort with the county district attorney's office.
Okay.
And Joyce Dudley's been great about allocating resources to, as part of that team. Hillary Dozer, who is a senior deputy district attorney in her office, has been very much involved, whether he will do it, in terms of answering your question, the concept has always been that the city attorney's office would focus primarily on the trial, and asking the judge to grant an injunction, but once the injunction's granted, we'd kind of turn it over to the district attorney's office, and to the police department, because, maybe, I'll get into more of this tomorrow night, this is a process where it starts with the police department seeing that one of our defendants has violated the injunction.
Right.
Filing a report, and that report would go to the district attorney's office.
Okay, so I should pay attention to this during the police department?
Yeah, well, you know, I think we should probably talk about this.
Budget discussion, or tomorrow night.
Yeah.
But because the gang injunction is a civil instrument, your office, I think, would be active, not the district attorney's office. And maybe we can talk about this more tomorrow.
Not once we've gotten the injunction, because the process for enforcing the injunction is actually much more like the process that a prosecutor uses to prove up a criminal case, for example. You actually, you have to prove the violation by a clear and convincing standard, which is not a civil standard, that's more of a criminal standard, and it's more of, the DA's office would have to prove to the judge that the injunction had been violated.
Well, something to be discussed tomorrow night is that the defendant cannot use a public defender, because it's in the civil arena.
Right.
So there's a little mismatch here, that the prosecution, so to speak, gets to use a criminal foundation, but, you know, the defendant doesn't.
Right, our 30 defendants, I think about eight of them have attorneys now.
Okay.
And about 16 of them, the most of the ones that don't have attorneys are in prison.
We should probably hold this till tomorrow night, unless there's a budget implication, as the city attorney, if he was sitting over there, might click on to say, keep within the budget, but unless there's a budgetary issue here, but I.
I do have one, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
So you brought up in your presentation these code enforcement cases, and I remember asking Mr. Armstrong last year, if the city attorney's office wasn't busy with the gang injunction, what would you be doing? And he and Mr. Casey were thinking, and they said, well, maybe more code enforcement. So do you agree with that, that that might be something that you would do?
I really don't think so, I think we would, if we weren't busy with this, it would be something else. For example, we, you know, we get sued, I don't know, two or three times a month by different people for accidents, for torts, we'd be handling that, you can't really control that. It's hard to say what we would be doing if we weren't doing what we were asked to be doing. We'd be doing what else we were asked.
Yeah, I just think there's plenty of code enforcement out there, I mean, these, these pictures look familiar to me.
Yeah, I should make clear, John Dornis, our, and our law clerk, our deputy, and our law, have nothing to do with the gang injunction effort, they're not, they're not cutting any corners in code enforcement, they have, I don't even think they're aware that we're seeking a gang injunction.
Well, I'm glad we're having this discussion in open session, so thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Mr. Wiley, on the water boards on which I represent the city, we get a monthly bill from council, and those bills are usually down to the minute, and I'm just curious if your office tracks your attorney's time in the same way?
Councilmember Francisco, no, and we've never done that sort of thing. I got to tell you, when, when we have attorneys come work for us, sometimes from private practice, they go, wow, I'm totally glad not to have to track. The last I saw was attorneys track themselves, and they've got, of course, machines and computers now that do, have to do all of this, they'll track it down to the six-minute increments. We've never had to do that, with the one exception that we, and this has been very old style, we keep track of our redevelopment hours, and that was primarily, in my time, Sarah Connect advising the redevelopment agency, and then I would keep track of the hours every month, just on a monthly basis, on a piece of paper, the number of hours we spent, because that is a direct billing at an hourly rate for, was for the redevelopment agency.
Do you think that that's a standard practice for municipal offices?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for salaried in-house attorney offices, yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clarify one thing, and that is, on the zoning ordinance update that we have in the capital budget, we have included, I think, $60,000 for extra legal expenses that we expect to incur. How we spend that money at this point, we haven't decided if it'd be, you know, bringing in an additional attorney on, or contracting out, but we have, because that's such an extra workload effort, we built that in the budget.
Okay. Mr. House?
Mr. Armstrong, thank you, that's kind of what I was asking too before, are there any other examples of that, or is that, besides, say, the enterprise funds, that would be the only example you can think of, where we're actually setting aside additional funds for anticipated workload?
Yeah, that's correct, at least for, in the legal arena. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on to the airport. Ms. Ramsdale?
Great, good afternoon. Assistant Airport Director Hazel Johns, and Airport Operations Manager Tracy Lincoln will be participating with me in the budget presentation this afternoon. As a tri-county's airport of choice, or at least we like to think that it is, our mission is that the airport will be self-sustaining, exceed expectations for safety and quality of service, and meet the air transportation and economic development needs of its customers and partners. As an enterprise fund, we are, the airport department is financially self-sustaining, our revenues are from user rents and, or, excuse me, user fees and tenant rents, and no local tax dollars. no local tax dollars are used. However, federal law does require that the airport's revenues be spent on airport operations, maintenance, and capital improvement. The airport department is comprised of 11 programs and has 52 employees that carry out the business, security, operations, maintenance, and planning and facility development work of the programs. About 82% of the department's employees work in the security, operations, and maintenance After many years of planning and construction of the new airline terminal, we now have almost, if you can believe it, two years' worth of operating experience. We were able to anticipate many of the workload impacts to our staff during the design of the terminal. However, there were some impacts that were of a greater magnitude than anticipated, and some were created by changes in security regulations and operations through the Transportation Security Administration. While almost all of the department programs were affected in some way, the security program was affected the most, and specifically the Security Operations Center, which operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The center is kind of like our communications hub with our security staff, maintenance staff performing dispatching responsibilities, communicating with the FAA tower, as well as local agencies' dispatch centers. They also perform security badging that is required for numerous people and employees on the airport. Our organization has many strengths, but I'd say our professional staff, we have broad areas of responsibility, ranging from property management to security to our stewardship, environmental stewardship of the slough. So it's quite broad, and also, one of our strengths is that we're financially sound. However, our constraints are also maybe of equal weight as to the strengths. We're in a highly regulated environment, both environmentally as well as through security and operationally through the FAA. Many unanticipated mandates come down, particularly through, in recent years, through the Transportation Security Administration, and many of these have short compliance deadlines. The department employees have worked diligently to try and meet all of these added workload responsibilities, but at some point, the effectiveness has become diminished. We held a department program owner workshop last fall and talked about kind of the gaps and challenges in our department workload. And to a person in the room, we all agreed that our security program really warranted the focus and priority for any staffing changes or increases, so that we could address the gaps in that service. Some of the examples of the Transportation Security Administration regulations and operational changes that were required, some related to the new terminal and some not related to the new terminal. For instance, all vendors and concessionaires who are not badged to be in the most sensitive secure areas of the terminal have to be escorted. In the old terminal, we didn't have vendors coming into the secure areas, because we didn't have concessions in the secure area. Well, dozens of times a day, our Security Operations Center is called by vendors, concessionaires for these escort services. They have to, you know, by radio, get the escort provided, and then log and document all these services that are provided, it's required. So that has increased substantially since we've been in the new terminal. Another operational requirement that the TSA has required is that vehicles requiring access to the terminal ramp, before we used to use technology, you had your security badge, and through technology, you could gain access to the ramp. And if you didn't have the proper access, an alarm would go off, and we would know that somebody, you know, that wasn't authorized was on the ramp. Well, the operational change that the TSA is now requiring is that the driver's employer has to, on a daily basis, if they know their driver's going on the terminal ramp, get their employee verified through the Security Operations Center, as well as when the employee actually accesses the ramp, they personally have to also contact and be verified by the Operations Center. And this requires not only vetting of that employee at the time, but then following up logging and documentation. So it's, this happened, I thought, how many vehicles could go on the terminal ramp a day? Couple dozen? Well, it turns out about 160 vehicles a day. You have fuel trucks, you have, the airlines have their lav carts that they run back and forth across the field, we have our maintenance employees, you have vendors, and so forth. So it's actually turned out to be quite a bigger number than any of us actually thought. The last example I'll give you is that the TSA originally, after 9/11, only required airline terminal employees that needed access to secure areas of the terminal to be badged. Well, in the last few years, they've expanded that to any aviation business or aircraft, based aircraft owner that needs access to the field has to be badged. Our badging went from 400 to 1,500. So all of this kind of added on to each other in terms of workload for the Security Operations Center, and we just felt that, at this point, we just could not operate like this into the future, and we needed to add positions, which we don't do lightly. So we, as a result of the workshop that we had, we looked at what the staffing requirements would be in terms of additional employees, and have proposed to add staff to the Security Operations Center and for the badging office. And this will allow our staff to more adequately meet the new workload or additional workload that they've been experiencing. Also, by adding more staff to the Security Operations Center, we'll be able to get them out into the field doing airfield inspections several times a day. Right now, Airport Patrol does that, and you really don't need a gun and a badge to do those types of inspections, but you just need someone that knows what they're looking for. So this will help relieve Airport Patrol of some of those responsibilities and enable them to focus on the airline terminal and other areas where you do need the qualifications that they possess. On the next slide, I will show you what the proposed additional positions are. The cost of this, these proposed positions for fiscal year 2014 is about $270,000. For fiscal year 2015 is about $298,000.
We have a question. Mr. Francisco?
Mrs. Ramsdell, do the, do the additional security requirements that the TSA has asked for, do they make sense?
In some regards, you know, maybe to the, to those of us common folk, they seem like they don't, or not that they don't make sense, but it seems a lot for a small airport. However, when you think that some of the most tragic events started at a small airport for 9/11, all of those people gained access to the aircraft through small airports, not big airports. So when you look at the big picture, you know, I guess you'd have to say that it does make sense in terms of the safety of the whole nation. But for a small airport, sometimes it does seem, you know, excessive. I don't know if Tracy has anything to add? I tried to dance around that without totally.
Mrs. Ramsdell, the question that comes to mind, just in the context of what Mr. Francisco's saying is, we are the portal through which people pass to become inside the perimeter of the entire airspace system when they board here in Santa Barbara. And this is a pretty significant additional cost. And I noticed that you didn't mention the balancing, you know, mandated cost reimbursement from the federal system of some sort. And am I correct in surmising that there just isn't one? I mean, are we able to achieve additional funding to support this effort that's on behalf of the entire national airspace system?
It is not a mandate that has been, that is funded by the federal government. We do receive a reimbursement for them. We also have to staff the exit lane as passengers get off the airplane and go, you know, out of the secure area. We staff that 20 hours a day, Tracy?
Yes.
About 20 hours a day, and we use hourly employees to do that. And we are reimbursed, you know, a certain amount for that, but that funding is decreasing, and I wouldn't be surprised, within the next few years, to see that go away as well.
Okay, so it is a burden, then, that our local airport has to find some way to bear, and that's why you're proposing it in the budget without an offsetting reimbursement?
Correct.
Thank you.
That is correct. The Security Operations Center and our Badging Office employees are currently assigned to the security program, which has a total of 17 employees and one supervisor. With the addition of more Operations Center staff, we're proposing that we assign the eight and a half positions that will be for the Operations Specialist staff to the Airport Operations Program under the supervision of an Operations Supervisor, and that'll provide better supervision for both the staff in the security program as well as in the Operations Program. And that'll leave 12 employees in the security program. Currently, the Operations Center has four Operations Specialist positions, and we're proposing to add one Operations Specialist, two Senior Operations Specialists, who will be kind of the lead person on the various shifts that are staffed, as well as one Administrative Specialist to be assigned to the Badging Office. We are proposing to adjust several positions. One is to reclass the Airport Patrol Supervisor for the increased regulations and responsibilities that that position has had to undertake over the years that hasn't been addressed, you know, with the addition of security regulations and workload in his, in that position. We currently have a vacant Airport Noise Operations Specialist position. We propose to eliminate that position and then create a position called Operations Supervisor. So it'll be a slightly additional cost, it'll be kind of trading one position for another. The other is to eliminate an Accounting Assistant and add an Administrative Analyst position, and this would be in our Business and Properties Program to help with financial planning, research, and analysis, kind of higher-level work than the Accounting Assistant position was doing previously. And then finally, to reduce one Airport Operations Specialist position to 50%, and this relates to the incumbent's personal situation that we're accommodating. So the Operations Specialist position that we're adding is so that we get one full-time person back in the SOC, and the reduced hours position will be in the Badging Office with the Administrative Special. There are a lot of specialists, I realize, in these job titles. So that, with those adjustments, we think that we will be able to better accommodate the workload that we have and responsibilities, and have everybody be properly supervised. So now Hazel will move on to the budget.
Colleen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you go back to the previous slide for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you. Could you say a little bit about what Operations Specialists and Administrative Specialists and Supervising Specialists do?
They specialize. No, Tracy, could you please?
The Airport Operations Specialists are the ones that actually work in the Security Operations Center. They answer all the incoming calls, they monitor all the alarms, they input data as needed, so people can get access to the areas they need, and they also issue notices to airmen, and they're trained in airfield inspections, and that's the part we're looking to increase, that part of their workload and their responsibilities. The Administrative Specialists will function as a credentialing officer. They check all of the IDs, they upload all of the information to the TSA Secure website, they get the results, that type of thing, and there's a lot of it. The Airport Operations Supervisor, not a specialist, but just the Operations Supervisor, is a new position, and it will oversee all of the Security Operations Center, it'll monitor all of the maintenance contracts we have with the CCTV system, the access control system, the emergency notification system, and the associated badging systems, do all the scheduling, help training, and emergency preparedness as well. And is there one more? I'm missing one.
The other, the other thing I'm curious about is the difference between an Airport Operations Specialist and a Senior Airport Operations Specialist.
The Senior just has a greater level of experience and knowledge, and they will act as a lead person on shift. The hope here is that we have the seniors on evenings and weekends, so we always have some supervision there, and then the Supervisor will be there other time.
So their duties are the same, it's just that they're operating in more of a leadership role?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What I'd point out is that this is a 24-hour-a-day operation, seven days a week, and so you have the Supervisor who supervises the overall function, but obviously, they can't be there all the time. And so basically, you have shifts, and the Senior person is kind of the person in charge on each shift. And it's similar to what we do, for example, in the police dispatch operation, where we also have a 24-hour-a-day operation.
Okay, thank you.
The goal of the budget was to incorporate the reorganization plan, as well as the other department program needs for the next two years. In doing so, we relied upon the 18-month experience operating in the new terminal, allowing us to make good cost projections on our expenses. We also identified any associated costs for the reorganization. The airport has a total of seven separate funds, five of which have separate revenue streams, all of which are segregated because of federal or state funding requirements. This slide reflects Page H18 in your budget and consolidates all of the revenues and expenditures for the whole department. At the top of the slide, the funds generating revenue are highlighted. Just briefly, the FAA entitlement grants, as you know, are those that we receive for capital projects at the airport, and the funding level is targeted to a formula set by the total number of in-plane passengers. The passenger facility charge is a fee included when airline tickets are purchased. The fees from the current application are dedicated to 49% of the debt service on the new airline terminal project. Customer facility charge is a flat $10 fee on every rental car contract, and the revenues from this fee is used to pay the debt on the Quick Turn Facility, which we constructed in the last four years for the rental car companies, all of the on-airport rental car companies, to maintain their vehicles and also store extra vehicles. The airport constructed 24 T-hangers, you'll recall, about four years ago, and, excuse me, and in doing that, we acquired a loan from Caltrans, Department of Aviation, for the cost of the hangars. Rental from the T-hangers repays that loan. And last, the Airport Operating Fund receives revenues from user fees and tenant rents for airport buildings and land. At the bottom, I'd like to call your attention to the capital program. As you know, capital projects are budgeted in full for the whole cost, but if they have a revenue reimbursement, the revenue lags, because you have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed. So that's why you'll see a negative at the bottom. From the consolidated budget, removing the other funds, this slide represents the airport's Operating Fund budget for 2014 and '15. Revenues are still consolidated, but in the next slide, I'll break those down. Salaries and benefits for 2014 incorporate the reorganization, and all positions are fully funded, without the furlough deduction from previous years. Supplies and services line item includes allocated costs, as well as material supplies, utilities, and contracts. This chart, excuse me, breaks down the consolidated totals and focuses on the airport's revenues or lines of business. Revenues from the airlines' commercial aviation leases continue to increase as a percentage of the whole. of the whole at 24%. Rates and charges for the airlines, when they use our building space in the terminal and the landing fees, are negotiated on an annual basis, and those rates are presented to City Council for approval and then implemented July 1st. While commercial industrial leases increase marginally on an annual basis, approximately 3% as a percentage of the total budget, this segment has decreased over the years while our aviation leases have increased, which is a goal that we set several years back. The largest share of the revenue pie at 35.5% is terminal lease revenue. This includes parking, and as you know, all three of our parking lots are open and operational, rental car, food and beverage, gift shop, and other concessions. The general aviation leases, non-commercial aviation, have also increased in the last couple of years due to new lease agreements and landing fees. So the total projected revenues for the department, $15.7 million.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, Ms. Johnson. So, so the parking revenues are then, including the terminal lease, the 33.5%? And is that, is that, is it, is that contracted out? Is that an oper, is that a subcontractor that, that, or vendor, I should say, that runs parking?
We have, it's a management contract, is what we have.
Okay.
So they provide the staffing and the operational expenses. We reimburse that on a direct cost basis, and then they charge a modest fee to handle it, but all of the revenues are, are collected and deposited in the city's bank.
And then, so the personnel required to run parking are not part of your headcount as far as your...
That's correct.
And then, second question was on the landing fees, the things that we, we approve and charge. How do we compare to surround, I mean, it's kind of hard in this area regionally, but compared to places like Santa Maria, San Luis Obispo?
Airports, actually, you don't measure, because every airport, their finances are different. Santa Maria, as you know, is a district, so they have property, they have revenue coming in that we don't have. So they actually look at cost per in-plane passenger. That's a normal way of, airports with commercial service anyway, comparing with other airports. And Santa Barbara, this year, our goal was around $9.75 per in-plane passenger, and we're very close to that. We might be, as you can imagine, the costs are flat, and it goes up and down with the number of passengers. And in the last 10 months, as you know, we've been increasing the number of passengers at the terminal. So ours is closer to $10 than 9.75, but that's still very reasonable. We've not had any airline complain.
Well, that was, Colleen, my question was, are there any pushbacks from airlines that would make a decision whether or not to serve Santa Barbara based on those kind of criteria?
No, and we just had a meeting last week, May 8th, with representatives from all of the airlines, with the exception of United. And quite frankly, the only question that they really grilled us on was the airport's or the city's mandated reserve funds and funding those.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss, go ahead.
Thank you. In fact, we compare quite well with all our competition doing that and the costs that you were talking about.
We certainly do. We're right in line with all that.
Could you explain to me the difference between aviation and commercial leases? I'm assuming that aviation is general aviation, anything right on in the airport, and the commercial is off-site, is that right?
Karen, I should say Karen hates these titles. Commercial aviation is the airlines, and when they rent space at the airline terminal and also pay landing fees. Non-commercial aviation, that's like the fixed base operators on the field, anybody inside the air operations area. The FBOs, Stratman is another tenant, Amperson is a tenant, that's the revenue that goes to that.
But I'm talking about commercial industrial lease.
Commercial industrial leases, that's everything that we lease for non-aviation purposes.
Even, including on the, right around the airport itself, as well as off-site?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And off-site, I'm assuming you mean north of Polster? Yes, north of Polster, and some, a little bit south of Polster, we have some buildings there that are also leased on a short-term basis. Our expenditures for 2014 are also approximately $15.7 million, and this pie chart breaks down the budget into categories for salaries and benefits, which are 35% of our total supplies and services. This one includes the intra-department agreements that we have with the fire department for ARF. It also includes the public works department agreement for the two engineers at the airport, and that's 37% of our total. allocated costs are 9%. Debt service is 11.6%, and this is 51% of the total debt service requirement for the terminal bonds, which is generated through our operational revenues. The parking shuttle cost is $863,000. It's expensive. Equipment for the budget doesn't show up because it's only $52,000, so it didn't warrant a slice. The last slide, speaking of airport policy reserves, July 1st, as you know, at the end of the year, they always adjust these based on budget, and this is our reserves as of July 1st of this year. As you can see, they're all fully funded, and we did have almost a million dollars available for non-specific reserves. Tracy Lincoln now will do the key performance.
What would that be, what would be a reason to have reserves above policy, I guess, just to go back to that previous question that you had with the...
Capital.
For capital needs?
That's what we do.
And do we have, so we don't have anything but, so you're saving up for a future capital need? There's nothing in next year's budget that would require the use of those?
We plan to, we've been catching up on some of our capital expenditures in the last year and a half, and so at this point, that'll fall to our bottom line. And then as we program capital expenditures, those monies will come out of reserve, be appropriated by council at the time the project's awarded. So that's what they will be used for. We can't make a profit, so as Karen said earlier, everything has to be used on the airport.
No, I, I understand that. I was just wondering, with $971,000, is there an anticipated cost coming up that you're going to use those funds? Or are you just saving up until if and when you do have that cost?
Most of the, at least $500,000 of that would be used for our routine ordinary expenses to take care of the, the buildings, the structures, our water system, sewer system, roads and streets. So we would appropriate some funds for that.
So why, then why isn't that just in the expense line of the budget as opposed to being in a reserve fund?
Because we needed to, this, some of these funds were used to, to balance out some of the overages that we had in the prior year.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lincoln, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'll just briefly highlight the key performance objectives for the coming year. In administration, we will, the performance objective, the main one that I think you'll be most interested in is the, to implement the reorganization that we just described to you, which advertise, hire, train, develop the job standards. So we'll be working diligently on that throughout the year. Regarding business and properties, they will be developing a request for proposal for a fixed-based operator. I, I think most everybody knows that fixed-based operators provide all the fueling services on the airport for both airlines and general aviation, and they provide all of the general aviation customer services. So we have two world-class fixed-based operators on our airport. And, and it is a requirement that you out with a request for proposal every so many years from, from the FAA. Regarding the marketing and communications, we will be increasing the awareness of Santa Barbara Airport in Ventura County through a strategic marketing program. There is approximately 1.7 million passengers in that area that need to know they have an opportunity to fly out of our airport, so we are heading into the south to get some additional exposure. Regarding the security program, we will develop an active shooter response plan for use in the event of an incident at the airline terminal. We, it's, it's important, and I know that the TSA likes to see these things developed, and they've already asked about it. So we'll be working on that in the security program. Certain ops, we will be conducting another full-scale emergency exercise in fall. So you'll, you can expect invitations to come watch, and it will be a full-scale drill where all the first responders are part of it. We do one every three years, and they are required by the FAA. And then in facilities planning and development, they will be issuing the, received comments on a scoping document for the airport master plan environmental analysis, and they'll have that by June 14. I think everybody knows we are in the midst of a master plan process right now, and the environmental is the, kind of the next step in that process. Once you get through the program and you have some, what appears to be preferred alternatives, they'll do a programmatic environmental on those. And, and that's, and that's the end of the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy...
Questions from the council, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is now the right time to talk about some of the specifics of the marketing that you plan? Or should it be done later? I'll leave that to Karen.
The marketing? Yes. No, we can talk about it now. What, what, we did a study several years ago that identifies kind of what our market area is, and where passengers either from our central market area go down to LA airports, which I won't mention their names. But also what it did is identify the Ventura County as a, kind of a tertiary market for us that we really don't tap into in terms of marketing. Here locally, we do the bus boards. We are starting to do those in the Ventura area as well, also making contacts with their travel agents and chambers to just acquaint them with, you know, what we have to offer at the Santa Barbara Airport. Currently, the Oxnard Airport has no commercial service, so we feel like, you know, this is a good opportunity to get our, keep our passenger base increasing and...
Is it too early to see if that can be measured yet, the effectiveness of that?
It's too early at this point, because we've just started with the, the bus advertising down there, and we just started with some of the other marketing activities. So hopefully in the next six months or so, we can kind of see, you know, by doing surveys and stuff, where passengers are, are coming from.
Any other new thrusts expected?
I'm sorry?
Any other new areas or thrusts expected, and more internet, whatever? I don't know, I'm just fishing here.
I can't think of anything other than that. That's a, a pretty big marketing effort in terms, and population down there, too.
And, and we said, you had a budget of 1.2 million, is that what we said, though?
No, I said there's 1.7 million people in that area.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. House?
Just in that same lines, I think some people locally have, for the service that's available in Burbank, often they'll take the train down to Burbank because it's very convenient that way, and they miss the LAX experience, and that's just fine. But it just makes me wonder if, we, we have shuttles going over to the long-term parking facility and the train station's right there. Have we ever done anything to, to coordinate at all with that, with rail service and really think about that they could just as well come to Santa Barbara on the trains as opposed to go the other way? I mean, I don't think we've ever talked about it, like, much.
With the trains, a lot of the cabs, of course, see the opportunity to transport, you know, people from the train station to the airport, and we do get some of that.
It's become, it's become almost like a, there's a little subculture of people that use Burbank here in Santa Barbara, and bypass our, you know, but they're taking all that time to get down there in the train, and it's, the same benefits could apply going the other way without parking. I mean, just something to think about. You're coordinating and been with the Conference and Visitors Bureau on our marketing efforts, and I get to see you over there, it's wonderful, and how effective is our coordination with the Conference and Visitors Bureau in generating ridership or flyership out of our airport passenger count?
It's, it's very good. When they go to their various, I guess they call them trade shows, they also promote our airport, their marketing materials promote the airport, and we're in very close contact with them in terms of markets that we feel that are important to the airport in terms of, you know, Santa Barbara service to that community or vice versa. And they incorporate those comments into their marketing plans when they go to these various conferences and market shows. Does you have anything to add?
We also work, as you know, we have seasonal service with Alaska to Portland, and that service, last year we had it just for June, July, and, and August. This year it's extended through September. And working with the Conference and Visitors Bureau, they tend to advertise in Portland to generate traffic to Santa Barbara. We generate Santa Barbara going to Portland, so it's a really good, close-working relationship. And one other thing that we're looking forward to doing in the new fiscal year is a visitor center at the airline terminal, something Karen's been wanting for a long time, and we're working with the Conference and Visitors Bureau, Downtown Chamber of Commerce, as well as Galena Chamber of Commerce, to put that project together, and that'll come back to City Council once we have it all together.
Good, I've got a couple, a couple more things here. And in terms of new services, I mean, there's, when we do add a new destination, or Portland's a good example, and Alaska, same thing. So what, what are we, what are we doing right now to actively encourage more airline service out of, out of here? We lost some during the recession. How are we, how are we doing on getting it back?
Well, as you know, we have an airline service consultant that we've worked with for probably the last 30 years, or not the same one, but we've had one for the last 30 years. And we constantly are keeping in contact with the carriers that we have here to preserve the service we do have, also to convince them to try and bring back service we may have lost, as well as looking at other carriers for service either that we lost or service we've never had that we would like. Hazel and the consultants have gone to two air service conferences recently, and they do what they call is kind of like speed dating, and you get a certain amount of very short period of time with an airline, and we were requested by quite a few airlines this time. And we make our economic pitch to them, how they can make a profit here and succeed, so...
Okay, because many, many of their reasons for leaving weren't like because of our bad service or something, it was even the ridership would be up, but they had use of the jets for some other place. And, and the last deal here, I, well, actually, I need to have some kind of a, a pulse kind of number or something that I can report to the downtown organization, or, you know, you can, but we, they ask for, how's our economy doing? And the airport is really one of those indicators in terms of, I think, employments or ridership or something. What would I, what would be the best thing to report?
Go ahead.
I think that reporting that in the last 10 months, it seems like we've turned the tide, and we've had increases each month, except for February, because we lost a day in February this year, but each month, for the last 10 months in riders, in passenger traffic. So we're up overall fiscal year to date about 2%, which is very good. The airlines are, we've had changes in equipment. You know, Frontier brought in the A319, which is a full-size jet flying to Denver, does have first-class service. American also changed their equipment from the smaller jets to larger, so we're seeing a shift in that regard. We're working with United to try to add another flight to Denver during the summer as they did last year. So it's, as Karen said, it's ongoing all the time. I mean, and the airlines make decisions on a quarterly basis, they don't do long-term planning anymore. I mean, it, it literally is month to month and, and maybe three months in a row, but, so we're working with that. And there's unique airline opportunities that come up, small regional carriers who do startups, and, and we may see some of that in, in the near future.
Okay, good. And my comment on the security issues, the way I look at it, and I, by the way, appreciate what you're doing and why you're putting a great focus on that, even in spite of the fact there's not additional funding for it, but I would look at it, if there were to have been some terrible thing occur here, what would we do in response? And the fact that you're doing this in a proactive way, and you're not, I mean, you're responding to the requirements, of course, but I have a sense that there's a spirit of really trying to do it well, and within the budget, the idea of using the non-badged, you know, officers or people that can do the other work to free them up. I think those are the kinds of efficiencies that are really, really deeply appreciated by us, but I, I want to say thank you very much for putting security up front on this.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you're starting this marketing program in Ventura. Could you give us some examples of, for someone in Ventura, what would be faster or cheaper or both in driving north instead of driving south?
Well, right now, we do have people that do come from Ventura and Thousand Oaks that use our airport, we just want more of them. But when you get to kind of the halfway point geographically, you know, if it makes sense... sense to come up here, sometimes our, our fares are very competitive, and they just don't know that. Even people that live here don't know that, because they assume that our, all of our fares are more expensive. The drive is easier, security is easier, I would say parking is easier, parking's cheaper. So there, I think there are a lot of benefits, especially for those people that are geographically located, kind of, in the midway point between L.A. and Santa Barbara.
So the, so the ads that you're doing, do they give examples?
I don't know if we've done, we do, so far, we've just done the bus boards that are similar to the bus boards that we have here, and we're working with their chambers to try and figure out how to get the word out to their community. So we're just starting to build those relationships.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In amplification to Mr. House's questions, when, it's not, when we're trying to attract new flights here, it's not just us that has to be attracted, but the, the departure airport also has to be cheap, that is, or reasonably expended, so, or spend cost-effective. So I think Sacramento is like 20 bucks or something, and, and San Jose, which would be a great flight, is also very expensive, am I correct? So...
Their operating, their cost per in-plane passengers are probably twice, San Jose's probably twice what we are, and I'm not exactly sure about Sacramento. It could be closer to three times what we are.
All right. So that's, that's the challenge we have. Not only are we wonderful and reasonable, but they got to take into account what the departure airport costs.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I have a question related, that's in the budget book, on page H, isn't Hotel 36. Related to airport security, it, the projected fiscal year 2013 column says that, and this is the item, "Complete all of the daily scheduled checks of aircraft operations area patrol points 85% of the time." Do you see where it says, it goes from 85% to 39.7%? So for whatever reason, you think you're not going to check all the patrol points? Is, is that, am I reading that right?
I will try to stab at this. The Airport Patrol has set up their own standards for the different locations that they want to patrol. It's not that the FAA or TSA requires each of these patrol points. But what this indicates is staffing issues in terms of, after 9/11, we added Airport Patrol officers, and I don't think for, I don't know, maybe six months during that whole time, have we been fully staffed and been able to keep a full staff complement of Airport Patrol officers. Some of it had to do with pay, which we addressed. Some of it has to do with candidates who can't pass the background check, which is, you know, more than your average city employee, like my, well, I have to pass it, too. Average city employee has to pass, it's more rigorous. Other items that were...
It's a performance measure, and they can't successfully note that they've completed that performance measure until every single checkpoint on their, that particular inspection is done. So if they fall one short, if there's 15 of them, and they've checked 14, and they get called away, because they have to go respond, it's failure. They didn't finish the whole thing. That's why when you see it go from 85 to 39, they're projecting what we'll have at the end of the year, because there's just not, we're not going to make up ones that are missed already. That's the reason for the reduction in that stat. But we hope to get called away less often if we have some additional assistance by the non-badged people taking care of some things.
Thank you.
So going back to trying to find, get back San Jose or Sacramento, and I know there's a constant work on your part, and working with your consultant and the airlines, I think it was today in the L.A. Times, there was an article about the number of flights being reduced, and Burbank actually getting harder hit than us, although we still got hit, and having to do with the type of aircraft being used, and... So I'm wondering with budgeting in the future, if there's a way to create more incentives or something that may have a cost upfront for our, for the department, but in the long run, as in, you know, waive the in-plane fee for, you know, the first year, and, but you have to require a three-year commitment to San Jose, or something like that, or Sacramento?
Actually, we already have that program.
Okay. So we're doing, so, so what, so, and how's that, there's just not a response to it yet? It's just not...
Oh, we've had, was it Horizon to?
Horizon to Sacramento.
Yeah, Sacramento, we use that program. And then when the year was up, they were gone.
Right.
So, and that's kind of the issue with a lot of these incentive programs. If, if it's a monetary incentive, like paying the airline, that has to come from the community, whether it's a chamber, or a, you know, separate organization that's formed to do that. The airport itself can't do that in favoring one airline over, over another. But, yeah, it, oftentimes, when incentives are given, once the time period is run out, then the airline just leaves. So that's kind of been our hesitation, even though we do have this program, and we do offer it, is that if an airline thinks they can't make it in a community, it does more harm for them to come and go than it does not to have come at all, really.
Well, thanks for that enlightenment. I know you're constantly trying to find the, that sweet spot there. So a couple of things, just general comments I get off and on about the airport, and just to clear things up. One, about the baggage claim, similar to parking, which you contract out, it's not city employees. Baggage claims not conducted, whatever, you know, the bags aren't being moved around by city staff at all, is that right? It's through the airlines? So there, I've, I've heard a few negative comments about how long it takes to get your bag, if you've checked a bag, and it's nothing to do that we don't have the moving, the moving...
Conveyor belts.
Conveyor belts, thank you. Because it all just depends on when someone actually gets the bags off the plane, and onto the cart, and moved it over to baggage claim. Any way, we have any leverage with, you know, increasing that customer service? Because, I mean, waiting 20 minutes, half an hour, or something for your bag is very frustrating.
We've spoken both to the local manager, as well as the corporate representatives for the airlines, and currently, one airline ground handles all the airlines at our airport, and they've had some staffing issues, and when that delayed bag situation occurs, it's usually that they are, have staffing issues, they don't have enough staff, so what they do is wait, you know, for a couple of flights that come in about the same time, and load them all at the same time, which makes the passengers who got off the first plane waiting even longer. There are some changes that a couple of the airlines are going to make in terms of ground handling, and hopefully, it'll happen in the next couple of months, right? So hopefully, we'll see some improvement in, in the service, but usually, it's because they don't have enough staff at the time.
Well, I don't know what kind of encouragement, pressure, whatever, either the general public in, in contacting customer service with that airline, or what, however, but I know we're the ones that get blamed for it, when, I just wanted to put out there, it's not, we don't have control over that, we, we need to hopefully change that. The other one that I hear again, and I, I know you know it's coming, it's about the restaurant. Could you first describe the level of sales in the new terminal versus the restaurant that was pre-security in the old terminal, and how well it's doing? Or not well, or whatever?
Well, I think the restaurant that is post-security, which is a full-service restaurant, plus Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, their sales went up 30 or 40% when they went behind, or post-security.
Mm-hmm.
And the reason is, is that the passenger count didn't grow, in fact, our passenger count was going down, was that their customers, which are the passengers, were, many of them were leery of getting stuck in the coffee shop outside of security, and then have to go through security and making their flight on time. So once you provided a place for them to relax, eat, post-security, sales just shot up. The gift shop did the same thing with sales. The Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, pre-security, their sales are about the same as they were pre, at the grab-and-go little facility that we had in the old terminal.
Okay. And you can still order from the restaurant, post-security, at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, pre-security, anything on their menu?
Right, and they'll bring it right down.
And, so I don't know if there's a signage issue or something, people just generally don't know that, however many times I try to, so maybe there's some marketing inside the terminal about that opportunity, and I'm, I'm wondering, even with the opening of the historic terminal, that could be an area, I mean, not as a restaurant inside with all the, all the kitchen, but maybe as a place with seating, or dining, or, you know, something, where people do feel like if planes delayed, you know, if there's a cloud over San Francisco, things tend to happen in San Francisco, and so people are waiting for someone to come in, to have a comfortable place to sit and have a meal, that, but that is still a constant feedback since the terminal's opened, and there are opportunities here. I'm just hoping maybe we can finally address those in a way that resonates with folks.
We can, but I, I think the bottom line is, is that we really don't have enough customers for two full-service restaurants. And I did, when these first, complaints first started happening, right after the opening of the terminal, I did a survey, kind of, the L.A. Basin airports, I mean, not just tri-counties, and there are very, very few airports that have full-service restaurants before security. Most of them have exactly what we have, or less. And that includes not just LAX, but Long Beach, you know, and airports more on our size.
Right. Well, maybe not a second restaurant, like you're, like, I'm not suggesting that, but just sort of the signage or the marketing to say you can order something and have it brought back, because, you know...
The restaurant did just put one...
Good.
Right as you walk in the door, so...
Okay.
Hopefully, people will see it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The debt service went up almost double in the last couple of years, and we can expect why, that, that, imagine, that's terminal costs, and the lease incomes don't match that. Could you describe what the longer-term plan is for covering, presumably, the notion is to cover that increase in debt in, in a planned way?
Part of the debt is covered by our passenger facility charge, and I'll let you describe, if that's what you're talking about.
That, and I think, a point in prior years, remember, while we were under construction, we had capitalized interest, and so that fund, not operational money, but the capitalized interest fund, paid the debt service. And then last year, we began with one debt service payment, which was half of a full year. We pay in December and July, or, I think that's right, either January and July, or December and June. So this year, the debt service is like $1.8 million out of operations, and then the balance of it comes out of the passenger facility charge. And when we issued the bonds, that was the way the repayment schedule was established. Does that make sense?
I'm sure it does, but I don't understand it. But that's, that's another story. And perhaps we can, you can, we can have a, I'll, I'll call you and talk, ask you about that a little more. There, also, I just noticed that the passenger facility charges had a bump, it's, it's a one-time bump there, seemingly, or in the, was it projected for, for 2013? It's 15, a million and a half, and it's lower on either side. Can you describe why that bump is contemplated?
The...
Like 150,000?
The revenue is based on in-plane passengers, and those who purchase tickets, and then those that are coming into the airport, and that fee's $4.50 per ticket. So if the passengers go down, then our revenues go down. If they go up, then we'll receive more passenger facility charge revenue. We do have, we have been accumulating revenues in that particular fund for debt service. I believe the application was approved in December of 2008, or January of 2009, so we do have surplus revenues in that particular fund, should our annual revenues go down. But we do have additional funds there. But it is based on passenger levels and passenger in-plan months.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Thank you for letting me have a second stab at this. First of all, I just want to reinforce what the mayor had said about the luggage situation. I just want to say it's really unacceptable. I mean, it's like, not even just like, okay, kind of like, you know, even if we can't do anything about it, we got to do something about it. Because, I mean, we just built this amazing facility for these airlines to be able to make money, and here we are, you know, you would think, in a place that intimate, and that close, that they could manage to just get over there, Johnny on the spot, and bring the luggage over. There's nothing else that has to be checked, it's just brought over and put on the thing. It's got to be the simplest of all the, you know, it's like totally low-tech, just, you know, so I don't know how you emphasize, from the city council level, that there's more than an interest, it's a demand. Get it right. Do it now, fast. And I just, you know, I don't know if there's more you want to say about that, but I just want to amplify that. And the, and I had no idea about the fact that you could have food brought down, and you could be with your family. I don't know how I missed that, so market it. The real, the real question I have here goes to the specific plan area. I mean, I still talk about it like that, from the days that we had all sorts of ideas and plans, and, and there were proposals, and big, now there's these big empty lots, you know, it's kind of like the big hole in the ground at the airport. Now, you're still making money on the rentals, that seem to be pretty remarkable, given the state of affairs over there, but there's this great big empty space that could be generating significantly more revenue, I would think, if it were fully developed, and it would also boost our local economy, in terms of our economic development plans, and where we want to go as our sub-region. The, the greatest possible thing the city of Santa Barbara could do would be to get that area developed with the kind of roll-up door, light manufacturing, research, connection to the university, you know, with the people going to school there and fulfilling their dreams, right there in our community. I mean, that's our dream, right? So, you know, now we're talking about another master plan, but we've had this on the books as a, of what I would say is a viable dream. Now, we've waited out this recession, what can we do now to take action? And what we've already created is a possibility for that area. What could we do right now? Because it would seem like that would alter even a whole lot of your future budget. Am I, am I missing something? It seems like that's the great opportunity for the city of Santa Barbara in terms of economic development, without displacing anybody for anything.
Well, once we got through the targets and all the other uses that came and went, council did give us direction to look at the small, light industrial use that was in the specific plan originally. We had been working with an architect on site plan, as well as some, what do you call it, model styles for the, the buildings, which we're ready to see what, you know, ABR kind of thinks of the style of the building. But we have some other property, I don't know what you want to say about that.
We'll also be scheduling a close session with the council, I think, in the next three weeks, about a potential tenant for at least part of the property, where we've received an unsolicited offer.
Thank you. And, you know, we, we will have a place to discuss that. In the general, without knowing anything of the specifics of something like that, I can say with great certainty, even based on my little business, and seeing all the startups that are starting to happen now, and the light manufacturing opportunities, and people are growing out of their garage, and they're looking for modestly-priced, quality, you know, the air-conditioned office, the roll-up door, the 2,000 square feet, I mean, there is a huge market for that. We don't have enough of it. The great big pop-ups they put out there, where Deckers is going, that's out of scale. You know, you see people using the Mammoth Building over there, and it's just totally decrepit. We need quality space, and the M1 Zone doesn't provide it at that level yet. So I want to be a real strong advocate for us putting something in there as soon as possible, and, and following through on, on that. So anyway, thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
We doing, keep on rolling? Waterfront?
Waterfront. Okay.
Sorry. I just didn't want to say.
My name is Brian Bossy. I'm the waterfront business manager with the city's waterfront department, and I'm pleased to be here with our director, Scott Reedman, our facilities manager, Carl Triverg, and our operations manager, Mick Cronman. I should also note that Jim Sloan, one of our harbor commissioners, is in the crowd tonight, or today. Hopefully, this won't go till tonight. We are here today to present our two-year recommended budget, staff recommended budget, for fiscal year 2014 and 2015. We're going to focus more on the... for fiscal year 2014 and 2015. We're going to focus more on the fiscal year 2014, knowing that if down the line we need to make changes, we can do that at mid-cycle next year. First, the department overview. We have 46 full-time employees at the waterfront department that are broken out into nine different programs. Our permanent staff includes four managers, five supervisors, 10 harbor patrol officers, and 27 general employees. We've had no permanent staffing increase in the last 11 years. So we continue to run the waterfront as it was 11 years ago, just with more modern technology and things like that. Our hourly employees, we do have them in both harbor patrol as well as our facilities program. And the overwhelming majority of those hourly employees come from our parking services. They can fluctuate between 30 and 50 depending on the season. We have overall with hourly employees through the whole department have seen, are seeing a decline in the use of hourly employees and thus the hourly funding for that. Waterfront department revenue. For fiscal year 2014, our budgeted revenue is $12,445,000, a touch above that. That's a 3% increase over fiscal year 2013. It's primarily, our revenues are primarily composed of three different areas. First is our marina management. That includes slip fees, slip transfer fees, and things of that nature. Next in line is our property management program, and that includes all our leases, whether commercial or restaurant. We do have over 250,000 square feet of leasable space that we manage. Next are our parking services. We have eight different parking lots in the waterfront department all along Cabrillo Boulevard there, and that accounts for about $2,262,000. And lastly, we have interest at 1.1% of our overall revenue. And I want to let you know over, you'll see this in a couple of slides right here, page H438. That's just, if you're curious, that's where you can find this information in your budget book.
Madam Mayor? In, in our, in the book on that page, it says other revenue, and for 2014, it looks like 392,000. So where does that, is that property manag, no?
That comes in, that's a great question, Madam Mayor, council member Maria. That comes, the other revenue on your budget page comes into property management. Three, about $300,000 of that budgeted revenue comes from cruise ships. And the additional roughly $90,000 comes from an assortment of odds and ends, including the harbor, a small amount from the Harbor and Seafood Festival. We rent out some of our facilities to local nonprofits and groups that use, for example, our marina classroom. So odds and ends like that.
It's just such a big fat number. And when you look at the general fund, you're like, ah, 400,000, just hanging around, you know, so, thank you.
Yeah, and we just like to separate that cruise ship revenue, just to keep track of it. As far as expenditures, fiscal year 14, our operating expenditures, a little bit shy of 11.9 million, and that's equal to about one-half of 1% increase. Again, you can find this in your budget document on page H438. The bigger expenditures, I'll go over real quickly. You've got supplies and services at about 31%, a little over 3.7 million. Our salary and benefits are at 49%. And again, we haven't had an increase in our staffing in over 11 years. We also have, another big number down there is our debt service, and that's at 1.8 million dollars. And those comprise our, the primary waterfront department As far as waterfront, our budget, our program highlights, administration, we plan to continue to provide the community with, with great events such as the Harbor and Seafood Festival, which I just mentioned. That comes in the second Saturday in October. This past year, we had over 14,000 visitors to the Harbor and Seafood Festival. We play a major role in the July 4th celebration at the city. We are responsible for the contracting of the wonderful fireworks that take place for not only July 4th, but also our Parade of Lights. Regarding property management, we continue to work with our various merchants associations, immediate as well as not-so-immediate. And by that, I mean our harbor, our harbor merchants association, our Sterns-Worf merchants association. But we also work with the downtown organization as well as the Chamber of Commerce, especially when it comes to cruise ship activity. Our parking services, a program highlight in the coming years, coming two years, we plan, or we would like to install some modern parking equipment. I'll get into this a little bit later. I believe it's in the next slide with our capital program. But we plan on modernizing our equipment. It's extremely dated. And with that will come efficiencies for both customers as well as staff. On the marina management side, we do manage over 1,100 slips in the marina, and we continue to provide efficient service. But in order to make that even more efficient, we are planning on installing a new marina management software program. Our software program that we have right now was first installed in 1997. And in terms of technological time, that's a few ice ages ago. So we're excited to replace that program with something more modern. As far as facilities management is concerned, this coming year, we plan on completing the preliminary design and engineering on phases five through eight of the Marina One Replacement Program. It's a multi-year program. It's been going on for a while now. We just wrapped up a few extra, or a few dock fingers recently. So this next year, there won't be construction as there has been in the past. We'll be focusing on the design and engineering, and then in fiscal year 15, get back to the construction of a few more fingers. Our capital improvement program for fiscal year 14, you'll see our capital funding at $1,455,000. And that, again, is on page E34. And our significant capital projects would include our parking services, which I just mentioned, and that's $200,000 for a ski data parking system for our staffed parking lots. And that includes our Harbor Main parking lot, which is open 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Our Los Banyos exit, which is located adjacent to the pool, which we operate on heavier days, big weekends and wet Wednesdays, things of that nature. Our Sterns-Worf kiosk, which last year, an interesting fact, we were able to begin counting people who walk out onto the wharf through a system. We've installed a thermal imaging system, and it counted over 1.1 million pedestrians walking out onto Sterns-Worf. So that's just people walking out. So as far as the cars going out, we tallied over 250,000 cars going out onto Sterns-Worf. And that takes into account, or drops out a factor for service vehicles and, you know, the bread folks and the restaurant, we don't count them. So a significant amount of traffic out there, so you can see why improved equipment would do a great deal there. And then also at our Leadbetter lot. Another capital project under Carl Tryberg and our facilities folks is the sea landing improvements, $250,000 for landscaping and walkway improvements. This is, I have a slide next that I can show you exactly where this is, but this is, leads out to sea landing. It gets a tremendous amount of traffic. You've got the seashell sailing group there. You've got sea landing, which is charters for various fishing boats and things like that. And this is also the on and off for our cruise ship visitors who, who get off the ship and are ferried over to sea landing. You also have the kayaks and outriggers stationed there. So it's a very heavily used area. And we've partnered, we are going to be partnering with Santa Barbara Beautiful on those improvements as well. In fiscal year 2015, as I mentioned, we'll go back into the construction mode for our Marina One Replacement. We'll be at phase five, and we'll be replacing the J and K fingers as part of that next phase. Here is the, this is a little hard to see, but this is a rendering of sea landing. Here you have Cabrillo Boulevard. These right here are what we call the seashell condos. But you're going to see new landscaping along here, replacing the myoporum trees. We've also got new landscaping adjacent to the seashells, new landscaping out here. This is the parking lot in and around the shower area that was installed as part of the West Beach Improvement Project. And then you'll see new railing and new sidewalk area throughout this, this whole area. So a significant improvement to an area that is, is in much need of that improvement. Key budget changes for this year. For the second year in a row, the waterfront department is being hit with a significant loss or reduction in revenue. Last year, fiscal year 13, it was the decor folks who transport oil workers out to the rigs and back, they found a new home down south, and that resulted in about $150,000 loss, primarily in parking revenues. This year, the Santa Barbara Maritime Museum completed their lease buydown just this past month, as of April 1st. And so with that buydown, we're going to see a reduction in our property management lease revenues of $144,000 per year. What is helping to make those two voids up are cruise ship visits. This coming year, we anticipate approximately 21 cruise ships visiting the area, visiting Santa Barbara. And these are split up, these don't come year-round. These are split up into what I call the shoulder seasons, kind of the not-as-busy seasons. For example, yesterday, had the weather worked out, we would have completed our cruise ships for the springtime. And that's basically the April and May period. In the fall, we'll see cruise ships return about the middle of September and going into November. So it's those times of the year which are generally off for our businesses or not as strong as the winter holidays and the summer season. So we anticipate about 63,000 visitors from that. And it's often asked, well, what happens when these people hit our soil? Where do they go? What happens? So over the, we've been working with cruise ships as well as our Chamber of Commerce in trying to figure that out. And so for the first six visits of this year, this is the data we have, when you're on a cruise ship and you come to a port, you sign up for activities well in advance. So they know exactly where everybody's going because they have to keep track of all these people. So as a result, in the first six shifts that came this year, 97% of the passengers, out of, I believe it was a little over 12,000 total passengers, 97% of those passengers stayed in town. They were either participating in, in signing up for trolley tours, whale-watching tours, the funk zone wine tours, and then a good deal of them just, you know, hanging around, walking around State Street, walking over to the harbor. The other 3%, or only 3%, I should say, participated in wine tasting tours over to the San Ynez Valley. So I think that was about 323 people out of that 12,000 in the first, first six shifts. So that's good news. You know, we're keeping these people here where we want them, to experience the immediate sights and sounds and tastes of Santa Barbara. One other key budget change, we continue to partner with our Parks and Recreation Department with our Beach Lifeguard program. The waterfront department is responsible for the budget, the lifeguard budget, an important program, obviously, for beachfront community. This coming year, the, sorry, the Parks and Recreation Department has seen a significant increase in activity on West Beach, and that's the area from Sterns-Worf over to Sea Landing. You can see it in the volleyball courts and just people hanging out. They've seen a significant increase. And as part of that, they will be purchasing a new lifeguard tower, or they're proposing to purchase a new lifeguard tower. And as a result of that, we would then be staffing that lifeguard tower. The thought behind this is, with that increase in people, we'll have another set of eyes and ears on the beach. This will also help with our harbor patrol folks who are responsible for patrolling that area, to have that extra set of eyes and ears, a trained set of eyes and ears who's involved in safety is really going to help them out as well. So we look at this as, as definitely a partnership on West Beach. Our staff recommendation for fiscal year 2014 and 2015, we are proposing a few fee adjustments. The first is our slip transfer fee increase for both 2014 and 2015. This is in line with increases in the previous years. In 2014, we're proposing a 25-foot, a $25 per foot increase, which will get your slip transfer fee to $350 a foot. And in fiscal year 2014, 2015, sorry, the same again, a $25 per foot increase, which will then bring the slip transfer fee to $375 per foot. I should note that this does not include the 20-foot slips, which are frozen at $200 per foot. Our slip fee increase, we are proposing a 2% increase for fiscal year 2014. This is in line with previous increases over the last few years at approximately that rate. This is also a requirement, I should say, a loan covenant with our Department of Boater, Boating and Waterways loan, or, yes, loan, that helps fund our Marina One Replacement Project. So as part of that, they need to make sure that we're receiving adequate income in order to cover the, the costs of that loan. And that is a loan in which we only pay as much as we draw down on it, sort of like a home equity loan in that sense. And if you're curious, as far as slip fees are concerned, we do take a survey the early part of every year. We survey 18 marinas on a number of issues, including fees and services. And we are always at or below the middle or the average, especially, we're well below the average when it comes to publicly owned marinas south of Point Conception. So we offer in a very, we're very attractive marinas as far as fees and services are concerned. Regarding our self-pay parking lots, these are our parking lots at, let's see, Garden Street, Chase Palm Park, East and West Cabrillo, which are, straddles both sides of the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion, as well as our Harbor West parking lot. We'd like to adjust those to come in line with our Harbor Main parking lot, which is $2 per hour, or $12 daily maximum. Currently, they stand at $3 for three hours, or $7 max per day. And these are the lots that we've now installed with the, what's called the Luke system. It's a pay-on-foot system. It's not the shove-your-dollar bill. We got, those are all gone. So we have 13 Luke systems that are much more efficient and friendly for folks to use. And I think what happens is people get a little bit confused. Our rates seem to vary all across the board. So this would put those all in line, except with Sterns-Worf, which is a completely different Our harbor commission recommendation, we were at the harbor commission in January, February, and March with budget items. And they agreed with our fee, the staff's proposed fee increases, as well as the overall budget for fiscal year 2014, 2015. However, what they did was recommend, it was to move forward a recommendation to the city council for approval of the waterfront department's proposed fiscal year 2014 and 2015 budget, provided that the waterfront parking lot landscaping services be put out to a competitive bid. And right now, Parks and Rec does our parking lot, our waterfront parking lot landscaping services. So with that, that completes my presentation, and we're all here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boss, yeah, that last point about the landscaping and going on with lifeguards and lifeguard towers and whatnot. So the relationship between waterfront and Parks and Rec, because that's been kind of an exchange of labor and funds and whatnot over the last few years. So can you kind of synopsize where that is? And what was Park and Rec domain at one time that is now being, now being taken care of by waterfront? And in terms of that also with the lifeguard tower, I said, I suppose the capital expense of a lifeguard tower is Parks and Rec's still, but the, the labor expense is waterfront's. Is that, and take it away, Mr. Director.
Councilmember Rouse, the waterfront over the last few years has absorbed some of, some things that were formerly Parks and Recreation responsibility, some of the beachfront restrooms, the one at the foot of the wharf and State Street there, the one at the visitor center in the Garden Street lot, and the one at Leadbetter. So we're now maintaining those. We also took over the Beach Lifeguard program. And the Parks and Recreation continues to run that through their aquatics program, but we reimburse them on a 12 times a month basis for that. So we got together with Rich Hanna, the aquatics manager, this year, and, well, actually, last year, he first floated the idea of expanding to West Beach because it's just been growing and growing in popularity. And our harbor patrol, make our harbor operator... And our Harbor Patrol, Mick, our Harbor Operations Manager, and Steve McCullough, our Harbor Patrol Supervisor, agreed that this would be a good thing to augment what we're already patrolling down on West Beach. So we agreed, and Parks had some money in their capital, in their aquatics capital program, to provide the tower, and we'll provide the additional staffing, we'll reimburse for the additional staffing.
So they're basically still Park and Rec programs, but waterfront reimburses them, doesn't really own the program per se?
Or the Beach Lifeguards, yes.
Right. And then landscaping, I remember that, when that kind of came down the pike before, having waterfront take on a greater part of the burden of the waterfront landscaping, or the parking landscaping, or that, once again, that was always kind of a gray area for me, why Parks and Rec was there, or what waterfront's responsibility was.
Correct. Parks and Recreation historically handled the tree trimming, landscaping, storm cleanup and stuff in the parking lots, in the waterfront parking lots. And so quite a few years ago now, that was, is similar to the Beach Lifeguard program, they continue to provide the service, but the waterfront department reimburses for that service.
All right, very good. If I may, Madam Mayor, I have a couple other questions.
You have the mic.
Thank you. In terms of the cruise ship revenues and expenditures, and maybe it's too early to tell, you have a number that was estimated for cruise ship revenues, your, the waterfront's cruise ship expenditures, i.e. for the extra shuttle, coning, staffing, do you have that, can you give us an idea where you are on that in terms of how waterfront nets out, if so?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, that's a great question. It's not free. We do have considerable expenditures. Based on 21, approximately 21 cruise ships coming next year, and I should advise you that it's a fickle industry. We had a cruise ship scheduled for yesterday, and 99% of Santa Barbara was basking in sun and heat, and there was a significant fog bank right off the coast, and they were, due to safety reasons, could not disembark. So that was one less. So it is a fickle industry. Estimating 21 cruise ship visits next year, again, split between the fall and the spring, we anticipate about, I think it's $400,000 in revenue. However, the costs that we have to pay for include shuttle, additional shuttle service for MTD, which totals about $85,000. We also pay for the production of brochures, to the tune of about $5,000. We also assist the downtown organization with some of their supplies that they need to run the program, which is about $10,000 a year. And we also pay 7,500, approximately $7,500 for City of Santa Barbara public works permits regarding the street. So in sum, we pay about, it's a little over $100,000 in expenditures, so it's about 25% of, when you compare revenues to expenditures. Yeah, I should also note that police, there's a significant police presence, they are paid directly by the cruise ships. And one thing that's not included in that 25% is the soft costs we have. We have a staff member out there the entire day, sometimes seven in the morning till 5:00 at night, helping coordinate. We also have a significant, significant participation by our parking staff, setting up cones, setting up tents, setting all that stuff up, as well as storage charges. We have to put all that gear somewhere. And so we have been renting a storage bin for Marborg that's set out there to make it that much easier. So it's a significant amount of effort on our part.
Okay, thank you. And then jumping to one more subject, now I'll get out of your way. Regarding the buydown of the lease for the Maritime Museum, so there was a one-time revenue generated by the department, and now, of course, we're taking it off the, off the, one-time, yeah, revenue, but we're taking it off the revenue side of operations, because you will be getting that much less. So where is that expressed, their buydown amount? And how does that balance out? Just, because most of the people don't really understand what that was all about. How does that balance out in terms of revenue versus the loss on your balance sheet for your operations?
Councilmember Rouse, that was negotiated five years ago. John Bridley and myself and the Maritime Museum staff worked through that with a little bit of nudging from the City Council. And the idea was a buydown amount of $1 million, if they wanted to pay it off upfront, and that would relieve them of their base rent payments for the duration of the lease. In lieu of doing that, they could continue to pay their rent for five years, and all rents paid would be credited toward that $1 million. So that's the way they chose to go. They continued to pay their rents, all of that was credited toward the $1 million. And we received a check for approximately $270,000 in April, which was what was the balance of that million. So we saw a little bump in our property management revenue this year, and then we'll see a corresponding dip in future years. The museum will continue to pay their common area maintenance charges, which are not insignificant, and their birthing fees for their display vessels in front of the museum, and a small, a real nominal amount of rent for the museum store there. So it's an equitable agreement, it worked out well.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I had that same question. You have, did you say, what was the total square footage of the buildings that you manage, just in the 200-plus, 2 to 250 square feet?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, yeah, approximately 250,000 square feet.
So the, and the maintenance of those buildings, obviously, is, in that environment, is an enormous task, so, and expensive.
It is a constant task, every day. It's quite amazing.
And many of those buildings are older, too.
Exactly. And then you have structures, this includes the wharf as well, so it's not only the harbor proper, it's also the wharf. So you're exposed to the marine environment, which has a whole host of issues in and of itself. Then you add a host of buildings out on the wharf, which is not a normal thing, but definitely a good one.
And there's, and there, in the capital section, there's even a recurring cost for timbers and suchlike on the pier, which I can sure understand. But I've just not, I don't have the sense that, are we, we're trouble, we're having a problem in citywide with adequate maintenance? We're sort of, it's just that, that struggle is definitely one that we're facing all the time. On the waterfront, with that 250,000 square feet, how are we doing vis-à-vis maintenance and with those buildings? Are we holding our own?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we are holding our own. We have a staff fully devoted to that. We do a good job, to be quite honest. Quite often, things pop up. We recently had a restroom remodel that's currently taking place below Brophy Brothers. It was slated to cost one amount, but when the walls were pulled away, there was a significant amount of damage. So, you know, we're in, we get our surprises just like everybody else with aging infrastructure. But Carl Triberg and his staff, they're out there every day. You've got the pile replacement project on Sterns Wharf, to the tune of about $325,000 to $350,000 per year, making sure those piles are, either new ones are installed, or old ones are maintained. And similar situations, you have aging infrastructure as far as HVAC equipment in a lot of the buildings. So we do plan out with our capital program, we actually look out at least six years for our capital projects, and make sure that we're covering the things that we need to cover, and yet maintaining our reserve balance in the appropriate manner.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would the gentleman from the Waterfront Commission like to speak regarding this requirement that services be put out to competitive bid? I'd like to hear what the commission was thinking on that. Thank you for coming, by the way.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You could state your name for the record.
What's that?
State your name for the record.
Jim Sloan.
Thank you.
Hi. Yeah, so, you know, if you walk around the harbor, and especially that West parking lot and the area, Leadbetter parking lots, in a lot of our opinions, landscaping could use some better maintenance. And so it's come up on a number of council meetings, or commission meetings, excuse me. And we've just, finally, as part of the budget, we said, okay, it's a very expensive lying item, I think it's to the tune of $700,000 a year. And so we were just looking at what we were getting for that, and there's a number of commissioners that think that we might be better served by having an outside contractor do it. And so that's kind of where we were at. I was talking with the gentleman that owns the Shoreline Cafe the other day, and he was putting some plants out there, out of the back of his car, Steve, and I was asking him, what are you doing? And he says, well, I put these out because that's the only way I can keep the front of my restaurant nice. And so it just helped reinforce some of that stuff. And so, I know Parks and Rec is doing the best job they can and everything, but to a number of people, it just looked like we might be better served by having someone else look at it.
We haven't looked into any numbers yet on this, though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, we haven't. We haven't done that at all. What we did at the last meeting was, as part of approving this budget, we said, okay, let's do that, but let's request the council, we request you people to allow us to go out and bid this and get some competitive.
Okay, great. Mr. Bossi, do we know how many people Parks and Rec is using to service our lots?
Madam Chair.
I wish I was Madam Chair, but we don't have a redevelopment agency anymore.
I'm stuck in old habits, I'm sorry.
I know, that's okay, Mr. Bossi.
Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hotchkiss, we, I don't have an exact number on how many folks are dedicated to the waterfront department landscape maintenance, but just real quick, because there's so many numbers floating around, I just wanted to correct the number. It's $239,000 per year for those landscaping services. So again, I don't, I don't.
Not 700,000.
Stand corrected, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Well, like I said, there's a whole lot of numbers running around this place right now. So it's $239,000 a year, and again, I'm not sure how many folks there are dedicated, as you're well aware of, staffing issues that Parks has have over the house. They do their best.
Right. And it wouldn't cost us anything to put this out and see who would like to take a look at it, is that correct?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us anything just to take a look at it. We would have to put some staff time into putting together a very comprehensive spec to have a good, decent bid. I mean, after a storm comes through, we have an enormous amount of palm fronds that hit the ground, and Parks comes and cleans all that stuff up, and factoring something like that into a private sector bid, it's, we'd really have to be careful we don't sell ourselves short on that kind of service.
Sure, I understand. That's the reason I asked about the number of personnel, because if in fact we could free up some personnel for Parks and Rec to do other things, we have crushing needs elsewhere in our parks. So I would like to move that we approve the waterfront commission's suggestion and put this out for a bid, if some of the second.
I don't think we're in a agendized item, where you can make decisions. You can suggest that to bring it back.
I would like to suggest that to bring it back, thank you.
And just, Madam Mayor and members of the council, on this issue, I think, if council directs us, we'll do that, but I think there's a lot of implications here, because we've got existing employees, their jobs could be affected. I think we also have a provision in our labor agreement with the SEIU that we need to at least advise them, that we're looking at contracting out, you know, so there's, if council wants to do it, fine, and we'll, but we need to kind of list for you all of the implications of it.
No, I understand, that's good that you brought that up, too, and we should know those implications, so otherwise, we would, might, we can make an unwise decision, but I would personally like to take a look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Murillo.
Thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Hotchkiss. I firmly oppose the idea unless the waterfront department has talked to the Parks Department and the employees, and asked them to, you know, what's their work plan, what plants they're using. It really seems, even that the commission is getting ahead of themselves a little bit here. That's a very serious action to take. You know, I respect our Parks Department, and like I say, there needs to be a process by which, if there is some dissatisfaction with their work, then there needs to be a discussion, just as if a waterfront employee had been doing something that the Parks Department didn't like. And you also, Mr. Redman, talk about the expense of the bid process, you know, I would object to that as well. So I appreciate, Mr. Hotchkiss, if you are thanking the commission for their work, I just, I think there's a lot more here, as Mr. Armstrong said.
No, and we should look, and we should look into that if we can save the city some money.
I think we need to have the job well-done, which is more to the point. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's what they were saying, sometimes it's not that well-done.
Mr. House.
Okay, so I've got a few things here. The, we still own the parking lots below City College, or over there in the flatlands below the bluffs, right? And we, those are the cities, and they're overseen by waterfront? Am I correct in that?
The waterfront department is principally responsible for the Leadbetter parking lot and the Harbor West parking lot. We have a joint powers agreement dating back to 1962, where we have sort of a shared responsibility with City College, but primarily City College operates the La Playa, what we refer to as the Playa lots, north of the boulevard.
When does that agreement end? I mean, is that, is there something there for us to really be considering, you know, really looking at that? It's a pretty important resource.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, this is the same agreement that has to deal with Pershing Park and the odds and ends and the baseball field, and it's all intertwined, so.
That's right, because of the ownership of different pieces of the whole thing. I remember you've explained this before, tried to.
Yeah, so it's part of a much larger monster.
That explains the look on your faces when I asked the question. All right, thank you. Mr. Kamadi knows about this, as we look forward and to this opportunity for the Federal Authority for Beach Reclamation, a funding source of some proportion for the coastline, and we've recently issued a letter to the, to the powers that be, I can't remember exactly to whom it went, but it really talks about beach reclamation, it also will eventually provide funding that will support sort of the natural means of beach nourishment, including additional funding that would be able to support some of our dredging efforts in the different harbors along the way. And I'd like to know if you've got that in your, on your radar, if you're looking forward to supporting that effort, and if it's not, maybe we need to talk more about it. But that came up at Beacon just recently, pretty strong and vigorous support from our board at the Beacon Board, including a letter, and also increased funds for lobbying efforts in Washington to support this additional funding for our coast. Where is our waterfront in that conversation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the main dredging authorities are under the Rivers and Harbors Act, and I'm happy to report that the president included $2.6 million in FY14 budget for dredging, which is good. This is the Water Resources Development Act, which is another authorization, federal authorization, for which they could appropriate funds to complement the dredging through regional sediment management, and this is projects that would have to enter our Santa Barbara counties. We recently drafted a letter for the mayor's signature to send to, I believe, was Senators Boxer, Feinstein, and Congresswoman Capps in support of this. It's in the Senate, I believe, right now, being debated at a lower level, hasn't made it up to the president yet, but it's got the attention of a lot of people, and something we do support, because dredging is vitally important to not only the city of Santa Barbara, but to our region in general.
Good, thank you for that. I just wanted to really, I didn't know whether you were coordinating with the mayor on that letter, I know she sent the letter, thank you very much. On the cruise ship revenue and the costs, so am I understanding there's a, there is, at least at this point, a net gain, and you're tracking that, and I think that was the reason for the question, is you're really cognizant of the costs and the revenue. We're charging, according to the newspaper, $15,000 to $20,000 for the landing, what was it called, the fee for coming into our area for each one of the ships, and that's where the $400,000 comes from. So are you keeping that as a separate account, so that we can continue to see where we stand in that whole enterprise?
Councilmember House, yes, we are. We have a separate revenue line item to track the revenue, and we have a separate expense line item for all these little things, the biggest being MTD, as Brian mentioned, but also printing downtown organization brochures to the tune of $4,800, and just various, you know, things we're doing to support the DO and their volunteer efforts, advertising for volunteers and all that, so we're tracking all that.
Okay, and then, and I know DO is pretty proud of the effort that they've been making on getting volunteers to show up for the ships and greet the folks that come off. Where do we stand with regards to other harbors in terms of those costs? Have we taken a look to be sure that we're in line with the costs that are happening elsewhere? Or are we, I mean, do we know if we're up above or below, or where we stand in that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, if you're looking to how much we charge in what you refer to as a fee for the cruise ships, we're significantly lower. I shouldn't say significant, we're lower than, but you have to look at it, too, these are, this is long beach, these are much larger venues than what we have here. So it's commensurate, it makes good sense with the fees structure we have now. I think it adds to Santa Barbara continuing to be an attractive place for cruise ships to visit. So it is a little bit lower, but again, it's Santa Barbara, and it's not Los Angeles, so we're a little different operation, where they can pull straight up and get people off, we've got to do the ferrying for folks as well.
Understood.
Understood. So now, I mean, the workload issue is one piece of it, but you are managing to ensure that it is in the black. And I think that's probably the most important part for the budget.
Yes, that's correct. It's an important source of revenue for the Waterfront Department.
Okay, very good. And then, lastly, I think to this whole issue about landscaping and the bid, a bid process of some sort, I know that it just seems very attractive on the surface of it to go in that direction, when you begin to look at the complexities of it and the need, I think as, as the board member mentioned a minute ago, for a very high standard in terms of quality of service. That's where the coordination between the two departments is critically important. If there is a, if there is an issue with regards to the quality of the work product of some sort, and we have to really look to see how to adjust the budget for Parks and Recreation vis-à-vis the gateway to the city of Santa Barbara along the shore, it seems like we should have that conversation. And I know that this, I mean, you, that's one of those, you pull the one string and it begins to unravel the whole sweater. You've got a lot of things that come together here. If we need a report, I hope it's a very comprehensive one that takes into consideration these things like you're talking about when there's a major storm, and how we've, you know, you've got a fixed cost, basically, and then you've got, are you going out to, how do you let the contractor know that that's coming and adequately, you know, accomplish that? So there's just a whole lot to it, and I'm not in favor of just willy-nilly going out to bid, there's just too much involved there. So that's just a comment I want to say back to you. If it does come back to us in any sort of report, it should be a very comprehensive report that tries to take into consideration as much as you possibly can of all these additional items. And it's, and it is important, by the way, for the budget of the Parks and Recreation Department, and for the people that they have on staff with their years of expertise dealing with these issues, it would be so hard, I mean, to imagine holding that standard and getting an RFP right. Anyway, that's it, that's just a comment on it, thank you.
Just a little institutional memory for us, part of the conversation about the park maintenance and who does what and who pays for what. The, the original conversation had to do with the parking fee revenue all going to the Waterfront Department, and yet the Parks and Rec Department paying, paying in their own Parks and Rec Department budget to maintain the lots, and they're not getting any of the revenue. So that was the start of the conversation of what's equitable, and that led to lifeguards and other, you know, who's using the facility and who's managing it, and where's the revenue coming from, from the people in that area. So that's been part of that discussion, and it's a tricky one, for sure. Speaking of, just to follow up on this, dealing with the, what you said about a competitive bid, and competitive, I guess the term, what does that mean? If it just means lowest cost, but I guess my questions would be, what are you getting for that cost? And you, as you mentioned, after a storm incident, you know, there, the level of service, the level of, of plants, I mean, all those kind of things, we don't have to answer it now, because I'm, you know, if it's coming back, that, that's part of what, well, I guess if it's a simple answer, what did they, what did the Harbor Commission just mean competitive as in the lowest cost bid?
Madam Mayor, I believe that's what they meant. We've been working with the parks for over 10 years, they've been doing this landscape service for us, so we'd have to really come back with a detailed scope of work that someone could competitively bid.
Okay. And I guess, just following up, if there were concerns or complaints on the number and types of plants and replanting and stuff, I'd be curious to know how much that's been communicated to the Parks and Rec Forestry Department or the Landscaping Department, because if they don't know that there's a problem, how do they know to fix it? So.
Madam Mayor, good point. They can bring that to my attention, I've worked directly with the Parks Department. If there's a specific area that is in need of attention, we can certainly discuss that and, and see if we can get that taken care of and approved.
Okay. And then finally, and this might be preparation work for the second year of the two-year budget, but I want to bring up something that came up at the Public Works Department budget, and that had to do with MTD and the $40,000 shortfall for the waterfront shuttle. And I'm only specifically here talking about the shuttle from Sterns Wharf to the harbor, not to the zoo, because that's a whole other question. And as I understand what happened at the, the Public Works Department, the 40,000 is being somehow paid for by MTD, so really this issue is something we need to look at in fiscal year 15, in terms of where's this 40,000 dollars coming from. There's the gap, but, so we'll have the service, but there's a question of long-term what, what's going to happen. And so I was looking at, and so the question came up, you know, what about the Waterfront Department, is there a nexus there in terms of helping bridge that gap? And I don't have the answer to that, but it was just looking at some numbers here on page H443, which is the property management page, the lease income for, let's say fiscal year 2015 is 4.4 million dollars. So 40,000 of that is, what, 1% of that? A little less than that? So just to put in, you know, because what would be the purpose of having the shuttle go to and from the Sterns Wharf and the harbor, so people can go to the restaurants and shop at the shops and, you know, and earn more revenue? So my question is, remind me, please, on the leases, a lot, many of the leases, you have a base rate rent, and then after a certain point, it's based on their overall gross receipts, right? And it's a percentage of gross receipts. So the better an organ, a better business does, the better the Waterfront Department does in terms of the lease. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. So I'm, I'm curious if, maybe, and maybe do this kind of exercise of not touch the base rent, because if a business is having a couple bad months or something, it's not to eat into their, their, their fixed cost, but as their revenues go up, doesn't it make sense to have some portion of their lease, a tiny portion of their lease, help fund things like the waterfront shuttle that will bring more people to their business to buy more stuff and eat more food? And, you know, and is there a nexus there? And like I said, I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be curious to know if there is any kind of way to look at that. Obviously, you could only do that as leases are up, you can't, you're not going to go in the middle of a lease, in the middle of their contract, but as leases come up, is there a shuttle component to it that can only, would only be applied if, you know, if and when they go beyond their base rent? And just a thought of trying to find without, you know, now that RDA is done and we're trying to find new sources of revenues, would that make sense without adding an extra burden to the businesses there, and in fact, as, use it as a type of incentive to help them create more business by the use of the shuttle? So I just wanted to throw that out there, maybe that's something you could look at in the next few months and if, because we are going to have to grapple with this issue in the second year, in a year from now, so. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On that, on that topic, I just, the conversation that we had was a two weeks ago or whenever it was, I just, I feel like that is, that, that little package is one to look at, just to bring back, to, to toss around, because I remember, as I recall, the MTD rep saying that there were an average of something like three passengers.
That was to the zoo. That was to the zoo, not to the harbor. That was from Sterns Wharf to the zoo.
Anyway, I would appreciate having that be a topic that we, that we, that we look at as, as a package, because we all want the same thing of efficient service, and we don't want to be wasteful about it either. So maybe we could have a chance to look at that, that system.
And I, yeah, and I'm not suggesting I have the answer here, but maybe that's the conversation with the Harbor Merchants Association, with, you know, just to start that conversation, is it something that they want to see more frequent shuttle service? Does that help them? And if so, you know, what's the cost associated with that? And is there a nexus somehow in terms of helping fund that service? So just throw that out there.
Yep, Madam Mayor, the Harbor Merchants Association is supportive of the shuttle service, even though, you know, by all appearances, it's underutilized, but they believe as we see more and more European travelers, Europeans get it, they get public transportation and shuttles and things like that, a lot of the foreign visitors do. And so, you know, we've talked about it, Jim and I met with Public Works on this thing, and I guess we just hope that the Fairbox revenue recovers from the big hit it took when they doubled the rate, and that we don't have to have this discussion necessarily. But the merchants, for their part, would like to see it happen, and we support them to the tune of 50,000 dollars a year in, in cooperative advertising and promotion, too. So there's, there's a possibility that maybe some of that could be sent that way.
Right. And, and for the, and I'm talking about whatever funding you do be directly about service to the waterfront, not other parts of MTD, you know, and maybe that's a Harbor Commission-MTD joint conversation, I don't know, but it seems like the alternate transportation, the MTD budget is hurting in a lot of different areas, and this might be a partnership that's worth exploring a little more, I don't know, in some other ways that we haven't thought about before. So, okay, Mr. House?
Yeah, just, I mean, to jump on that bandwagon, I mean, it may very well be, although you may have already figured out places you want to spend the money from the cruise ships, I mean, the fact is that if we, if we look at offsetting places that were kind of a windfall in a way, out of, over the past year and a half or so, two years, we've started to see that pick up. Maybe there's, not to come up with the solution, but I think it's worth the creative, the idea of having the more frequent service will engender more use, we know that. The fair, that was an issue, that really, you could see it just fall off, right? And yet there was, there's an interest in using it, not just by people that are just hanging out on it back and forth, but by real users. So you had a lot of support on the council for finding some way to solve this when it was here before us the other day. Just want to, let's take that ball and run with it.
Any other questions? Mr. Ralph?
I just wanted to comment about the, the use of cruise ship fees and the use of, or whatever goes on with Harbor Merchants and our leases, is that the cruise ship, as Mr. Bossy pointed out, is, is a fickle industry, and, and we are getting this amazing pump this year, but if circumstances change in Mexico, for example, or other things change, we could budget for this and have this line item revenue that goes away in two years, and then boom, you've got an issue. So I'm going to be a little cautious about wanting to commit to another program or a new, new kind of subsidy, because I think that could turn on about as in the, in the merchant rear, so to speak, having been a merchant down there myself at one time in my career.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much. Are we, do we need a break, or are we just want to go through about a five-minute council break? Okay. And then we'll go on to solid waste.
To help solve our, our budget deficit at that point, we did raise about 420,000 dollars that went into this big solid waste fee pot, and moving forward in FY14, we're going to show that as its own line item. So we're going to blend the, the recycling fee, the regional program fee, and that additional October 11 fee into one line item. So on a net basis, it hasn't changed, but as we look at the detail, that's the reasoning for that, that difference. One of the additional revenue line items that we added in FY14 is for Marborg Recycling, and that's about a third of the way down the column there. One of the things, and it's, it's one of our key objectives for 2014, is that we are going to be working with Marborg to establish a similar revenue sharing agreement with Marborg for our business recyclables, similar to what we have through Gold Coast Recycling in the county. At present, Marborg collects the business dumpsters, commingled containers, and then they process and market those commodities. We would like them to share that revenue, so one of our objectives for the coming years, we would like to negotiate an agreement with, with Marborg in FY14. Since it'll be about a half a year, we're estimating we put in a small amount of 25,000, but that number should grow in, in out-years.
Excuse me, will this require renegotiation of our contract with Marborg?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it will not require us to renegotiate the franchise agreement, we intentionally kept those two issues separate, so we'll be able to do this recycling revenue sharing agreement completely on the side and not have an intersection with the franchise.
I don't think we want to open that can of worms, thanks.
Right. I'm going to skip past public education and tackle that at the end, so I will skip to the grants, and what you'll see is that our grant revenue has decreased quite substantially since 2012. The reason for that is that the Ealing's Park project, where the state gave us about 800,000 dollars, has, has come to an end, and our remaining grant fund, funding is about the 20,000 that we receive every year from the state for the bottle and can redemption The last category that I'd like to call your attention to is the other category at the bottom, and what you'll notice is that under FY13, we see a large one-time spike in other revenues that then drops dramatically, again, down to 2,500 dollars in FY14. This FY13 projected amount of about 300,000 dollars is that amount that we negotiated with Marborg as part of our final negotiations on the new garbage contract. So one of the, one of the contractual agreements was that Marborg for FY13 would continue the Zone 1 and Zone 2 revenue concession that we had had since 2012, and they would continue that through this year. So we see that one-time spike in FY13 revenues, and then it drops down again to 2,500 dollars. Coming back to the public education funding, I wanted to spend a couple of minutes on that. As, as with previous years, every year we are contractual, Marborg is contractually obligated to give to the division about 141,000 dollars in revenue to be used for public education. We use that for a number of outreach endeavors, we produce radio spots, we produce some television spots, English and Spanish. Most recently, some of you have seen this brochure, this tricolor brochure announcing the new franchise agreement, how residents can use those services. We, we blanketed the city, we sent out 24,000 of these. For those of you that were at the SOS banquet last week, you saw the spot that we produced with the high school to outreach to high school students. So every year we have a pretty robust marketing plan, and we use that 141,000 dollars for that purpose. One of those contracts, one of the contractors that we contract with using that funds is a group called Explore Ecology, and what used to be known as Art for Scrap. We've had an ongoing contract with them for years and years, probably upwards of 20 years. That contract amount has hovered around 25,000 dollars, and one of the things that we would like to do in FY14 is to decrease their contract amount by about 15,000 dollars and use that money to bring the curriculum up to date. We've had this contract for 20 years, we have never really revised our curriculum. The, the solid waste landscape has changed dramatically over the last two decades, both on a general global basis as well as on a city-specific basis. If you just look at our contract these days and what we're negotiating or looking into with the Resource Recovery Project, you see that the landscape has changed quite dramatically. We would like to put out an RFP in FY14 to bring that curriculum up to something that reflects the goals that we are trying to accomplish here at the city. The reason why I bring this up is that, my understanding is that some representatives of Explore Ecology are here, they would like to talk to you about that reduction in their contract services, but I wanted to give you the context for what we had in mind for FY14. Any questions on revenues or expenditures, and I'll go on to, to the fees.
Just that last point, I know we'll have more of a discussion later. You're talking about 15,000 dollars is what you're saying would be needed to, to generate that new curriculum? That's, that's your estimate of what it would be, and you're going to send out an RFP to do that?
That's our current estimate, I don't know the exact numbers because we haven't done it, but that's, that's a good guess.
Okay, and there's, has the city considered reaching out to any of the local foundations, ORFLA and the other ones that maybe would really have a strong interest in seeing this kind of curriculum be developed, and that way, have, have we done any of that kind of looking outside? Because it doesn't look like the grants have really, you know, are reflecting that.
Hey, Councilman Mayor, Councilmember House, I haven't looked at ORFLA yet, I'm thinking that they may actually be one of the folks that submit a proposal. We could, but we're, we're really looking right now at who, you know, who could or who would be submitting a proposal to develop that curriculum. I wouldn't be surprised if ORFLA actually submitted a proposal.
I didn't mean to, I just meant that as an example, because they have supported, financially supported those kinds of efforts in the past, but there certainly are others as well. And so it doesn't sound like at this point, you're, you're looking at adjusting the budget to do this as opposed to seeking outside funding to be able to accomplish the same thing and keeping the relationship with the organization formerly known as Art from Scrap whole. And so I'll be interested to hear the rest of the discussion, I just want to raise that as a possibility.
Mr. Ralph?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Forrester, you talked about a bad debt number, a collection number of like 214,000? Is that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ralph, the, the bad debt allocation for FY14 is 100,000, so of that 214,000 of other expenditures, about 100,000 of that is to account for historic bad debt that we are accounting for on the books as in another 50,000 dollar increment to keep pace with the bad debt that we would expect in 2014. So it's about half and half.
And that's just on ratepayers' bills, is that?
That's correct.
That's correct. But the revenue, the, the 5% that we, the city charges to, to do that billing, isn't listed as a part of the solid waste fund, because that's, that's not part of this, but the debt of not collecting that is.
That's correct, the billing fee goes to the general fund, and the bad debt is realized by the- by the solid waste fund.
All right, all right. Just, I might come to that, back to that later. And then my next question was, this is part of my lack of institutional memory, but the solid waste department, and we're talking about the curriculum, we're talking about the educational piece of it and whatnot. At one point in time, my, my recollection was that it wasn't really a solid waste department per se prior to the food scraps program. I might be wrong about that. But in terms of the actual personnel needed to develop this curriculum, go out and go forward, can you bring me up to speed on that? Because I'm not really sure what it is we're doing in terms of like what the, you know, your, your org chart does in terms of going out to the schools or doing, doing what we talked about and perhaps producing RFP to have somebody else do that?
Sure. So it's a good question. Right now, the, the solid waste or the Environmental Services Division has one and a half FTEs that are outreach staff. Those are the employees that go out to businesses. They do audits at those businesses, help them set up recycling programs, help them save money. We do that at the schools. Just in the last two weeks, we've gone out to five of the Santa Barbara School District campuses again and re-audited them, and we're finding ways to help them drop their bill. That's been the crux of what they do. The, the dividing line with Explore Ecology is we have traditionally used a contractor to do the classroom piece. So whereas we've gone out to the teachers, the faculty, the administration, help them set up recycling programs, know what containers to order through Marborg, what other containers would be useful for their campus to consolidate different kinds of materials, and on a broader scale have that, those recycling programs in place. Explore Ecology has done the in-classroom work of teaching students various lessons such as how do I reduce my waste? You know, the difference between using a reusable cup or having a permanent cup that would then, you know, save dozens over the lifetime.
And just so I have this correct. So the, you said the one point, one and a half FTEs in environmental services, that desert does not, does not fall into the umbrella of solid waste?
That does fall into the umbrella of solid waste.
Is that, is that part of the, was it the 8.5 FTEs of solid waste?
That's correct.
So, but those, those are considered environmental services?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify, there's been a staff that's been doing this function for about last, I'd say 12, 13 years. When the, when the council basically started the solid waste strategic plan, probably late 1990s, early 2000, and then set a goal of 70% diversion, then we had to have a staff to implement the programs necessary to get us from where we were at the time, which was below 50% up to 70%. And so, and as well as manage the contract with, with the hauler and also interact with the county on all of the county programs that we're engaged in. So that, but, so this program's got about a 12 or 13-year history.
Then, Mr. Armstrong, is that obligation or that goal, is that over and above the state obligation that the hauler is required to meet?
Well, the current, no, the, well, the haulers aren't, we're required as a city to meet that obligation.
And that.
And then, and so at the 50% diversion level. But then the council set a higher standard at 70%.
But when, in our contract, we've required our hauler to meet.
That's correct.
I know we're going to hear from Explore Ecology, but just to follow up on the context. So the current contract is 25,000, and the recommendation is to go, for that contract to go to 10,000, and then the balance of 15 to put out an RFP to create a new curriculum. And that's the money that would go to the winner of that bid, right?
That's correct.
So what, what's the expectation from Environmental Services to Explore Ecology for that $10,000? What are they expected to do that's obviously going to be much different than what they have been doing?
Right. So the expectation is that they narrow their focus to one specific module that they have developed, and that's the waste reduction module. We went out last year and, and looked at a variety, a number of their presentations in the classroom. That was the one that we were most comfortable with them continuing because regardless of what changes may or may not be made to the curriculum, there are enough of the central tenants of the waste reduction curriculum that would transcend those changes. And so we'd like them to focus on that module.
Okay. And I know your budget here is talking about the operational budget for fiscal year 14. What is the department's reserve balance? Do you have one? And where is it in relation to council policy? What's the number of reserves that you have in, in your department?
So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, at the end of last year, our reserve balances were around $200,000. They, the solid waste fund is now an enterprise fund. A couple years ago, we made them from, converted them from a special revenue fund to enterprise fund, which means that they are now technically subject to the same policies like water fund would in wastewater. So our plan and expectation is that over time, we would have to find a way to build up those reserves to meet those requirements. But we have a little bit of reserves now. Next year, we're presenting a balanced budget. But the following year, because of recycling revenues primarily going down, we are intending to use, at least at this point, to use some of, some of those reserves. So that's where we stand right now.
Okay. So the policy, the council policy would be, you have 200,000 right now. That's what, you're just starting to put money into the reserves because you didn't have that policy before. But what would be the, what would be the number that you're aiming for to reach policy?
Yeah, you know, it's a good question because the budget, as you see, is $19.9 million, but most of that is payments to the hauler. So
Right.
Our, our real operating budget minus that would be right around two and a half, almost $3 million. So it would be 25% of that.
25% of?
About $3 million, right.
$3 million. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions at this point? Okay. Thank you.
Let me turn on my microphone, sorry. So in, in fiscal year 14, as you're aware, we have a entirely new rate schedule that's resulting from the franchise agreement that your council approved with Marborg in February. And to the rates that were negotiated and approved as part of the contract in February, we did apply a contractual CPI and tipping fee adjustment to those rates. So they're about 2.6% higher than the rates that we brought to you in February. Those are contractual obligations that the city passes on to Marborg every year. And I'd like to just note that part of that 2.6% is a surcharge on the tipping fee charged at HEGUS of about $2.45 per ton. And that's to cover the cost of the environmental impact report for the Resource Recovery Project. The county is estimating that that would be a four-year surcharge to cover the cost of the EIR process. And this is something that we originally brought to your council in November of last year, when we, when we were talking about the Resource Recovery Project. We'll have a robust and in-depth discussion about fees with the finance committee tomorrow. So I'm not going to go into too much detail here today unless you'd like more.
Just a quick question, Mr. Forrester. So that, that 245, is that going to be considered as part of the baseline for the future CPI adjustments? Or is that going to go away in four years?
The CPI is a, we, we have two, you know, two adjustments. To the tipping fee, actually it would be, yeah. It, it is going to be part of the baseline.
Thank you.
Yeah. But it does go away in four years. So we have a couple of key performance objectives that are outlined in your budget pages. The first is no surprise in that the conversion technology, or what we're calling the Resource Recovery Project now, will continue to be a major target of our efforts. In FY14, we anticipate with the county and with the other participating agencies completing and participating in the environmental review process as a, as a responsible agency. We'll also be refining the structure of the contractual agreements between the participating agencies and the vendor or the vendors, in this case with the emergence of Marborg. On May 1st, the county did receive Marborg's proposal for the material recovery facility. So this summer, we will be spending a lot of time undertaking the same in-depth evaluation of the technical and financial merits of that proposal. The second major initiative is that should this council approve the single-use bag ordinance, we will be having a lot of work in implementing that ordinance, instructing consumers and regulated retailers how to comply, and then setting up all of the systems for reporting and overseeing the levels of compliance and ensuring compliance with the regulated community. As I mentioned earlier, we'll also be working to establish a revenue sharing agreement with Marborg for the commingled recyclables that they collect from business dumpsters throughout the city. The fourth one I'm, I'm particularly excited about, and that's, over the past about year and a half, we've been working very, very closely with the Planning and Community Development Department to, to become part of the review cycle for projects. And what we've been trying to accomplish there is that it's much easier to work with developers and with contractors at the blueprint stage to make sure that enclosures for trash and recycling are sized appropriately and located in an area that is easy for Marborg trucks to access. We have found that even without an ordinance, just having the ability to talk to architects and developers, they've been very accommodating to, you know, to sizing those things. So we don't get into the, the real tricky messes that we see in the densely populated downtown of having nine different businesses all sharing one undersized enclosure. So one of the, with that as background, one of the initiatives we're going to undertake and complete in FY14 is to develop waste generator profiles for customers of all types. So it could be a retail store, an office building, a medical clinic, a food service facility of various square footages that we will be able to use and we will be able to share with developers and architects so that they can adequately size those enclosures. The fifth one, as Mr. Samario said, we are balanced this year. In FY14, we're actually banking a surplus in FY13. And then in FY14, with a drop in recycling revenue of about $325,000, we are underfunded again. So one of the initiatives we'll be undertaking in FY14 is to develop long-term options for balancing the solid waste fund. And we'll be, the operating budget, and we'll be bringing that back to council for consideration. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Why don't we go to public comment? Stephen McIntosh? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I am Stephen McIntosh. I'm the Director of Development for Explore Ecology, formerly known as Art from Scrap. With me here today in council chambers are a couple of our board members, Joni Hollister and Kathy Snow. I wanted to just remind you all, I'm sure everybody in this chamber knows, but for those watching on television in 1989, AB 939 passed requiring 50% diversion from landfills by the year 2000. Soon thereafter, Explore Ecology, then known, then Art from Scrap, began providing education to students in the city of Santa Barbara and helping the city provide the required education, recycling education to the students in its jurisdiction. And as Mr. Forrester said, for more than two decades, Explore Ecology has reached about 2,000 or between 2,000 and 2,500 students every year, kindergarten through sixth grade in the city of Santa Barbara. We're very proud of our programming. We are local, and we're proud to say that we're the leading provider of environmental education in, in Santa Barbara County. Unfortunately, we were recently informed by staff that the city's proposing, or Environmental Services is proposing a 60% reduction to our contract for next year, taking it down, as you all stated earlier, from 24,500 to $10,000. At this level of funding, next year, we would only see approximately 700 students in the city out of approximately 6,000 elementary school students. We've also learned, and as you have been discussing, staff's intention is to remove the composting element of our curricula and limit it to the waste reduction or recycling and waste reduction and reuse portion of the lesson. And staff plans on conducting an RFP to have an outside firm develop a new composting curriculum, and then conduct another RFP to solicit and select a new vendor to provide or deliver the composting lessons for the 2014-2015 year, school year, which means no composting education happens next year. We would like to suggest that we work together, Environmental Services staff and Explore Ecology staff, spend some time together this summer refining our existing composting lessons, which, by the way, I've observed also, and they're very good as they are now, but we could, we could refine them. Instead of taking the $15,000 out of the contract with Explore Ecology and utilizing it for an RFP process impacting local employees at our organization, let's keep the number of kids that are being reached up next year, and let's work together and develop the composting curriculum together. Let's work together as partners, as we always have. Composting is not complicated. In aerobic digestion is another matter. That's several years down the road, and we should probably have a discussion about that down the road. But between Environmental Services and Explore Ecology staff, we could develop a very effective and current curriculum for composting next year. We have senior environmental educators like Tahara Azradhi that have been doing this work for 20 years. She is one of the best. And myself, who actually oversaw the design and implementation of the city's food scraps program. Between Matt's staff and our staff, we have plenty of expertise in the room to revise or refine our composting curriculum. We're not here to tell your staff what to do. We understand that it's the city's prerogative to determine how to spend its funds. However, we do respectfully ask that the council consider this contract as part of its solid waste budget review process because we're concerned about the impact that such a significant reduction might have on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, for, is for Mr. McIntosh?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. To the council.
Okay. Madam Mayor, just to go to that, I'll just make a quick comment. And it's, I really feel strongly that the, that that invitation that we just got to work together as partners on this is really important. That's an organization that has provided a really constant and excellent service over the years, and we don't want to do anything that could actually harm that effort. We need to work together with them to seek the additional funding, this one-time cost, make sure we keep constant with reaching out to the youth. And they are really the educators for their families. And it turns out that the kids get it first usually, and it goes right back up the chain. And I, I would really strongly urge us to find ways to keep composting in the program and to ensure that, why do I always forget the name of the ecology?
Explore.
Explore Ecology. I will get it. I'm sorry, I'm slow. But Explore Ecology can continue to deliver those services. And secondly, I'd like to talk about the, about the need to really look at the plans of new development and ensure that they've planned for the waste stream, just as you're saying, Mr. Forrester. By the way, it was great seeing you and your kids on the train, at Train Day. That was so much fun. Planning Commission, ABR, and HLC have opportunities to ensure that those designs really do conform to the need for functionality when it's all said and done. And the question I have, and I don't have the answer, but I just raised it, is do we need an ordinance modification, change? Do we need to relook at the building code? Is there a line that goes in there somewhere? But these are things that should become just a standard operating procedure in the design review process at whatever level. And I appreciate you raising this so it's not an afterthought. So I don't know when the answer would come, but I, I'm, I'm open to us looking at what we can do to kind of codify this so that it doesn't have to be a discretionary thing each and every time, and wonder, you know, and then get forgotten, and then we later have to pick up the pieces.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. I would have, on that same topic about the, the amount of waste generated by different kinds of operations, I would have assumed that that, that there's a manual somewhere that already has that information.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, there are manuals. I mean, in fact, the city has an enclosure design manual from 10 years ago. And so to, to get to your point, you know, along the continuum of what we're trying to achieve, the first is that we're trying to make sure that we understand what's generated. We, you know, the, the characterization of solid waste tends to change if you look at it over a decade. Packaging changes. We have four streams now where we're taking organics out of the way.
We have four streams now, where we're taking organics out of the waste stream, which is usually about 30%. So, we want to make sure that we're correct, and we understand the densities and the weights of that material better, but we want to make sure that we're accurate. And so, in terms of our overall plan, the first was to develop those waste generator profiles, or verify that they're still accurate. Second, revise those voluntary enclosure standards that we had previously developed to take advantage or to account for changes in collection, changes in vehicles, changes in setbacks, and things like that that we see. And then, thirdly, bring it back to council and say, this is what we've done on a voluntary basis, is there anything else you'd like us to do? But we were only prepared to go as far as the voluntary stage now, and we're making really good progress. I think that every plan that we can make changes to on paper and ensure adequate space saves down the road dozens of hours of our outreach staff trying to untangle these bin sharing agreements from undersized enclosures.
Okay. And then, the other thing I'd like to ask, could you please forward to us a list of the positions and responsibilities in your department? Thank you very much.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to go back to the Explore Ecology subject for a moment, and I don't really fully understand our relationship with them, to be honest with you, as it stands, but as we look to implement, or I guess we'll change the curriculum, or update the curriculum, as you were talking about before, is there a skill set, or a capability that doesn't exist with Explore Ecology that you're looking for somewhere else? Because I'm really not sure what we're doing here, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to be clear, we appreciate the work that Explore Ecology has done. They've been our contractor for 20 years, but on the flip side, they've been our only contractor for 20 years. One of the things I think we're interested in is what else is out there? We could work together with Explore Ecology, but we'd be going through just about the same steps in saying, well, we'd like you to develop this sort of proposal. I mean, it's essentially going to be a sole-source proposal with a contractor. As long as we're going through all those steps, my feeling is, put it out there. We live in a town with several colleges, a major university, a litany of nonprofits. I'm interested to see what comes back. Competition yields innovation. Competition yields good pricing, and it yields creativity. I'd like to see what's out there, because we have unreached populations, we have language barriers, we have different demographics. I'd like to see what somebody comes up with and says, hey, your residential recycling rate has essentially flatlined over the 10 years. We think by capturing the students in these grades this way, it could be a skit, it could be a video, it could be a notebook, whatever it is they come up with, I want to see what's out there that would be best practices, that we could then arm a contractor with, such as Explore Ecology, with better curriculum and go out and do the job that aligns to the city's goals. I would fully expect Explore Ecology to be one of the proposers for this. I'd just like to see who else is out there. It's a big state, a lot of people do this, and they don't need to be local to develop the curriculum. I think it's a good idea that they be local if they're going to go into our schools, but in terms of developing the curriculum, I don't think we need to limit ourselves to this locality.
Right, no, and I completely see your point, in terms of reaching out and seeing what's out there and what's available. The other side of the coin is, there is going to be a period of time where that program is going to take a hit. And I'm just saying, I know as much about the program as I've heard in these last few minutes, so I'm not that familiar with it. But to me, it would almost make more sense, if this is in fact a valuable program, and if we really do want to make this outreach, wouldn't it make more sense to somehow continue the program at status quo and do the RFP on top of that, as opposed to cutting the program to fund the RFP? I mean, to me, you're going to have this lag time, where you're going to lose whatever outreach you're going to have for those students for that period, so, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you raised good points. I think there are a couple of points on that that I would offer. The first is, I don't think that a short-term hiatus where Explore Ecology is still in classrooms for the one module will close the door with the school district. We have too strong of a relationship with the school district. We talk to their superintendent and their administration. Like I said, we've been at five of their schools in the past two weeks. We sit on their sustainability committee, we are standing presence there. I don't think the door will close, but it's a risk. And the other issue is, outside of additional grant funding, there's a finite amount of outreach that we need to do. We still have a whole new contract to educate residents and businesses and multi-unit property owners alike about the new services, how to use them, and how to save money through increased recycling. We have a single-use bag ordinance that may be coming down the pike. So, part of it is just an issue of where we see what it is that you would like us to put in place in FY14. That said, we are open to, we're open to anything, and we will take the direction.
Mr. Samario?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we're not talking about a lot of money. If it was the council's pleasure to sort of continue the contract with Explore Ecology, but still do this RFP, we're going to need to spend $15,000, or find $15 to do that. We could find it, we have a tight budget. We talked about the long-term goal of trying to rebalance, so we are just being sensitive to the funds that are needed. But if it's the council's pleasure, we have no problem spending the $15,000 and still maintaining that, so we don't have any downtime. But we could be, we would want to put out this ultimate curriculum out to bid to see who might be able to do it locally, and Art From Scrap could certainly be a proposal. But again, not a lot of money, so whatever the council would like us to do is fine.
Thank you. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I will address the Explore Ecology issue, but on page H164, Mr. Forrester, notice, no, number of calls handled by code enforcement staff? Like, what are they called for, related to solid waste?
Councilmember Mario, they're primarily illegal accumulation of waste. That's probably the number-one call that we get, is somebody saying, my neighbor has inadequate trash service, or has not signed up for trash service, and there's a big mess of trash, all the way up to the classic hoarding case, we get those. So, that's primarily the private property case we get, and then we also get some curb-side and street-side dumping that we take care of.
Well, sometime I'd like to see a photograph of the hoarding. I love that show, so if you, I think, it would just be interesting...
I've got some good ones for you.
Okay, good. Sometime, please, bring it. And then, it panics me a little bit that we're looking at 2015 with, I mean, are you using the expression deficit of $300,000? We've just gone through this process of negotiating this huge contract, $16 million a year for 10 years, and we didn't exact enough franchise fees? I mean, how is it that we're a Charles Dickens orphan right here going, wow, so much money is here, how are we not solvent? I'm not ragging you, I'm, it's trying to support you, and I'm sorry that this is the case, Mr. Forrester.
Councilmember Mario, I would call your attention to, yes, we are projecting a $313,000 deficit in FY15, but in FY13, we are projecting a surplus of $240,000. So, the net difference is about $73,000 in FY15. So, essentially, we're going to make a big deposit at the end of FY13 and draw down on those reserves in FY15. So, the net difference is about 73.
Okay.
One of the things that we alluded to previously is that, of our $2.6 million budget, a big chunk of that, about $450,000 this next year, is based upon highly volatile recycling markets. And so, that's really where our vulnerability is now. You'll notice that, well, I don't think you can see it on the budget pages, but in FY14, we are expecting to receive $450,000 in recycling revenue from the county. In FY15, we already know, because we're paid in arrears, that that number is $125,000. So, that's a $325,000 swing in one year, and that's one of the reasons why we're having trouble staying balanced year to year.
Well, I will look forward to your strategies for being balanced. And then, on the Explore Ecology issue, I do wish that we would continue to work with that very valuable partner. And I'm sorry they changed their name, because Art From Scrap is like on the tongue of every child and teenager who went through the program, and they're very creative people. I know Jill Cludier from when I was at the radio station, and there's, Stephen McIntosh is an expert in solid waste, and so I think there really is the expertise there to forge an educational plan. They're experts in talking to children. And I mean, separate from that, I really would hate to see the number go from 2,000 or 2,500 to 700, even for a year or two. We have their young minds to influence in a short window. So, I would support you continuing to work with Explore Ecology. Thank you.
Mr. House?
I had meant to ask this before, and I'm glad that Ms. Mario just brought it up, and it's the fact that we got presented today, distinct from in our book, the 2014 budget, but not the two-year budget. And so, I really would like to make sure that in the presentation, for those who are watching, who don't have the benefit of reading this right now, what you see is a distinction. Certainly, you must be anticipating some longer-term strategy for smoothing the ups and downs of a volatile recycling market. I'd like to hear a little bit about that, and if there's anything else that distinguishes 2014 from 2015, so we can have that heads-up, and the public can hear about it as well. I mean, obviously, if it's just status quo, then you can say that, but if there's any other high points, you should probably let us know right now.
Councilmember House, I think where we are right now with the overall budget is, we have put our finger on one of the primary problems, which is the volatile recycling revenue. Our goal is, in the next couple of months, to come back with a series of options for your consideration in the out-years. You know, one thing we do know is that, just as recycling markets go down, they tend to come up, and so, we will be trying to identify some threshold level where we know a reasonable amount of recycling revenue that will come in. On the high years, we'll put that into reserves, and then we'll draw down on that as we need to, in the down years. But that's certainly going to be one of the options.
And if I could, our goal is to get to a point where we're not relying on any of our recycling revenues to meet our operating costs, that any recycling revenues we get, we build up into our reserves, and then when they go down, we might have to use them. But again, I would like to be able to ultimately just have appropriate level reserves, and then any excess we get above that from recycling revenues, we would use to abate rate increases in the future, but still having all of our costs covered by the fees and not relying at all on recycling revenues. And that's what we're going to be talking about next, when we bring this back next year, as part of a mid-cycle review, and it might require a rate increase. We didn't want to sort of keep adding on other rate increases to this contract, because we already had a lot of things going on. They went up by $1 million already, just for new services. We incorporated the concession into those fees that we're getting from the haulers. So, we thought, is this the time delay, or another $300,000 or $400,000 worth of cost on the ratepayers? So, we said, let's take a look what the recycling revenues are going to do, pay attention, and if we need to do something next year, we would. And we'll, of course, bring it to you, a proposed plan for getting back in balance.
I appreciate hearing the strategy out loud, and I think that's important, because we've just gone through so much to get to where we are right now, and I agree, I mean, the ratepayers are wondering, and so, for us to be able to have a long-term strategy of how to smooth this out is really important. And I don't know how the conversion technology piece of it fits into it, I mean, that just maybe is a wild card. But I remember hearing Mr. Mustang, what's his name? John, yeah, just appreciating his thought, that he intends to hold, actually inventory, if you will, some of those resources, and hit the market at the high points, and we're not really, I guess, in that position, but whatever strategies we have to spare the ratepayers any more volatility, I'd really appreciate hearing more about that.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I'll just add about the Explore Ecology and the RFP. I mean, 20 years doing the same thing, it's probably worth looking at that. I just don't think our current contract recipient should get the hit that late, and to have some sort of continuity. So, if we can find $15,000, keep things on the status quo with the current curriculum, I don't think it's doing any harm, but open it up, and do everything that you said, in terms of what is out there, and put out a comprehensive RFP. I'm sure Explore Ecology will submit a proposal, and probably a very good one, that we look at very carefully, but not to have them get the hit for our process of wanting to move forward with expanding or just changing our process. So, I think we can probably find $15,000 somewhere and do that. And they have been to have a bigger issue of if they can win the contract in the future, so. And I think I heard that from some of my colleagues as well, so. Yep. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, and this meeting is adjourned.